Is not with us in person. He's asked me to chair the meeting. TCA 844-108 requires that all votes taken during electronic meetings of the board or meeting for board members participating remotely. Hartgrove is participating remotely. This is for Larry Jensen. It be taken by call or roll. In accordance with this section of the law and our board meetings policy, all votes today will be taken by call of the roll. I'll ask Casey Griffin on our staff will call the roll to establish that we have a. Mr. Griffin.
Mr. Cobbins. Mr. Darnell. Eby.
Here.
Mr. Edwards. Mr. Ferguson. Mr. Hamby. Mr. Jensen.
Here.
Ms. Kim. Dr. House. Mr. Morrow. Madam Chairman, Hartgrove.
Here and I am participating by myself from Cookeville, Tennessee.
Vice Chairman. You have nine members present.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. I was going to ask both Ms. Hartgrove who has already responded as well as Mr. Jensen. Is there anyone in the room with you?
I am participating from Fort Worth, Texas, and I am alone.
Thank you, sir. So I declare that the quorum is present and we are duly convened. I further declare that Mr. Gordon Ferguson is excused and also note that the Commissioner is unable to attend today and I believe Dr. Eve Carney has a statement from her. Is that correct? You want to give that?
Good morning. It's nice to be here with you all in person. Again, my name is Eve Carney. I'm the Chief District and Department. I regret that she's not able to, but I'm happy to provide an update in her absence. Mainly, the update today will be around the work of the department around the ESER plans and ESER funding that we are. As the Commissioner may meet states were required to submit plans to the U.S. Department of Education by June the 7th, Tennessee submitted our plan on June 7th and received approval of our state plan by the 15th. This is the plan that captures kind of strategy, engagement, the collection of data, and then what the chips will be to support the needs of teachers and students from the pandemic. Addition, the U.S. Department of Education released a data collection template, which when shared some information about the scent and the type of data that would be required of states. They released a template for public comment on July the 1st and are requesting comments through August the 31st. It is very comprehensive and granular in places, requesting disaggregation of data in places that historically we have not had to do. So we will probably reviewing that, what we are currently doing to also submitting any comments that would be necessary. Across the state, districts are continuing the work of developing plans for ESER and that would include plans for the safe return to in-person instruction, spending plan and public facing ESER plans for districts. Those plans are due, Jim, sorry, August the 27th. Sorry, I've got too many dates in my head. August the 27th, with this amount of federal dollars flowing to districts in addition to the funding they already receive, there was a need for an extensive review process. The department has established a multi-level process and we are beginning to get those plans in and will move those just to make sure they are compliant with all of the requirements that are the law, but also to help support the required. Along with those three large pots of money, there's all them, the American REAP plan also included additional supplemental allocation for IDEA. Tennessee received an additional 56 million to support student. The district application and supports were weak. Office hours, districts started yesterday and would continue through the application period. Addition to that separate allocation, there is also in the American REAP mark for funds specific to supporting homelessness. Tennessee received an additional 15 million there. The first wave has gone out to districts, the first wave of applications and grants, with the second wave going out in September. And finally, to support all of this, the department has created and is currently in the process of finalizing staffing for a relief funding plan team that really is intended to support the additional needs of districts for all of these funds. It will, technical assistance, also assisting the department with the monitoring and oversight of this extensive relief effort that has been given to our state. Those are the updates I have for this morning.
Thank you, Dr. Carney. Any questions for Dr. Carney? Thank you.
Thank you.
Tell the Commissioner we miss her.
I will let her know. Thank you.
I would like to ask if there are any board members or maybe Dr. Morrison would like to comment about yesterday's workshop.
I'll just start with a quick recap of our day yesterday for those of you that may not have been with us. We started the day with a lunch with Metro Nashville School Board, which was a great opportunity to hear from those board members and some of their staff with whom we work closely and to really have a great conversation and collaboration on the things that mattered to all of us in this work. So it was a great opportunity to be with the Metro Board at lunch. Then we had several presentations of note. In the afternoon, we heard from the Center for Assessment, which was extremely instrumental, I think, in helping us to kind of frame our thoughts ahead of the data return on this year's state test results. So we anticipate participation rate data coming next week and then the real student achievement results the following week. And I thought it was a great chance to really think about both the limitations of that data, but also how we can use it to support districts and to support our recovery and acceleration efforts as a state. Then we heard from Casey Hagner-Rin at the department about, again, some of the notable highlights from this year's testing window, some of the changes that had to be made, some of the exciting ways that the department is supporting districts and providing additional resources to prepare for the end of year tests across the state. We heard about the counseling standards and various things that the department is doing to support that work across the state, especially in terms of alignment with career in college and the advising work, the preparation work, all the different sort of aspects of ensuring that our students are prepared for success after high school. We talked a little bit about our master plan and the final version for this year's plan that's up today for a final vote and a few comments after that and wrapped up around four. But it was a good and full day as it often is at workshops, so looking forward to another full day today.
Thank you, Dr. Morrison. Any other comments? I would just like to say, too, I thought the workshop was outstanding, presentations, particularly on the Center for Assessments and TDOE assessment updates, how they tied together. Further discussions, I think. Let's move on to items for action. The first item that we have is our consent agenda and state their name if they make a motion and those who second it do a motion to accept the consent agenda. Mr. Edwards moves to accept the consent agenda and Mr. Cobbins seconds it. Discussion? If no discussion, we must have a roll call vote. Mr. Griffin.
Mr. Cobbins. Darnell. Mr. Eby.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards. Ferguson. Hamby. Mr. Jensen.
Aye.
Ms. Kim. Mr. Morrow. Madam Chairman, Hartgrove.
Aye. Aye.
Mr. Vice Chairman, you have nine ayes.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. The consent agenda passes. There are a number of similarly situated items throughout the, also lend themselves to being combined into the consent agenda. The policy law requires a roll call vote anytime participating electronically. Chair can't simply make the changes by unanimous consent, so I will need a motion here that will save the board from being required to make 17 individual additional roll call votes. The motion would create four, five different consent agendas. In order to reduce the number of roll call votes, I therefore move, I'll make the motion, I'll need a second, that items two A and B become a consent agenda group, items three C and D become consent agenda, items three E and F become consent agenda, three K through U become consent agenda five. Is there a second for that? Mr. Morrow seconds. Mr. Griffin, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Darnell. Mr. Eby.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards. Mr. Ferguson. Mr. Hamby. Mr. Jensen.
Aye.
Ms. Kim. Mr. Morrow. Chairman Hartgrove. Vice Chairman, you have nine ayes.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Those will be then grouped as consent agendas as we move through them. First two are items A, first reading of A and B, repeal charter school performance framework and repeal charter amendment.
Ms. Gaffey.
Ally Gaffey, interim Director of Charter Schools for the State Board. This morning on first reading is item A, the charter school performance framework, and then combined with item B. Both are work as in charter school authorizer as well as seeing the processes. That responsibility has now transitioned to the Public Charter School Commission and so therefore the Charter Commission has approved both a performance framework for their own schools as well as pass an emergency school's timeline role as of their July meeting. Questions?
Questions for Ms. Gaffey? No questions, can I have a motion to approve this as presented? Mr. Darnell for the consent agenda approval as part of the consent agenda. I guess we'll cover both of them, A and B together. Sorry. Item B.
Subject by both of them together.
Oh. Motion to approve them. Do I have a second? Seconds? Any further discussion? No discussion, Mr. Griffin, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Cobbins. Mr. Darnell. Mr. Eby.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards. Ferguson. Hamby. Jensen.
Aye.
Ms. Kim. Mr. Morrow. Chairman Hartgrove.
Aye.
Vice Chairman, you have.
Thank you, sir. Motion passes. Item C, Ms. Gaffey.
This rule outlines a process for the approval of a training course by the State Board and provides specific training course requirements for governing board members. Provisions to the rule were made in collaboration with the Tennessee Charter School Center and they include the addition of three-year approval period for all training courses unless indicated by the provider or the State Board, clarifying language regarding reporting requirements, and the ability for a governing body member of a charter school to request a reduction or waiver of the annual training requirement due to unanticipated hardship. We also will be doing a hearing prior to final. Need to answer any questions here.
Any questions for Ms. Gaffey? Have a recommendation from the board staff, is there a motion? Mr. Morrow moves, is there a second? Ms. Kim seconds, is there a further discussion? Discussion, Griffin, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Cobbins. Mr. Darnell. Mr. Eby.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards. Mr. Ferguson. Mr. Hamby. Mr. Jensen. Mr. Jensen.
Aye.
Ms. Kim. Mr. Morrow. Chairman Hartgrove.
Aye.
Vice Chairman, you have nine ayes.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. I also would like to remind people that these rules do have first and second readings as Ms. Gaffey said, and in between that, we do have rulemaking hearings. Encourage people to participate and to participate in those hearings in fact between second reading. Next item is school board training rule.
Similarly, this rule outlines the training requirements for a local school board member and includes the establishment of a school board advisory committee, which is responsible for evaluating any training programs that are requested. Provisions to the rule were identified in consultation with the Tennessee School Boards Association and they include clarifying language about the approval period for the training courses, an overview of the roles and responsibilities of the three state education agencies as part of required course content, and the ability of a board member to request a reduction of waiver, or waiver rather, for the annual training requirements due to unanticipated hardship, and this was per the request of the government operations. Similarly, as Ms. Gaffey said, we will be doing a rulemaking hearing between first and final and happy to answer any.
Questions for Ms. Gaffey? I would just like to say that over the last month, Chair Hartgrove and I and Angie Sanders participated Summer Law Institute, TSBA. Part of that was to describe the role of the State Board, the differences between the State Board, Department of Education, local boards. I think it was, having served on a local board before, not realizing what role the State Board is, very helpful. I'm glad to see as part of the training, training will now include the differences between the State Board. Do we have a motion to accept MD school board training rule? Mr. Edwards moves, do I have a second? Second, any further discussion? Mr. Griffin, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Darnell. Mr. Eby.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards. Mr. Ferguson. Mr. Hamby. Mr. Jensen.
Aye.
Ms. Kim. Mr. Morrow. Chairman Hartgrove.
Aye.
Vice Chairman, you have nine ayes.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. The motion passes. Next item is Career and Technical Education, Ms. Sarah Williams.
Good morning. This item includes new and revised course standards for the following CTE clusters: agricultural, food, and natural resources, architecture and construction, education and training, government and public administration, human services, and marketing, distribution, and logistics. The high school CTE courses format has changed based upon educator feedback for ease of use and for closer alignment with competency-based industry and post-secondary standards. The Department of Education recommends acceptance on this item on first read. The SBE staff concurs with this recommendations. Happy to take any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Williams?
I have a recommendation. This is Lillian Hartgrove. First of all, as always, thank you for the great work in the career technical education realm. I'm incredibly appreciative of what you do there and I think is spot on. There's one minor recommendation that I have for you and it's under Early Childhood Education Careers, Level Two, Page Four, 2.5, Lesson Planning. In that section, it states lesson, it states content area, this is, I think I said 2.5A, Lesson Planning. It mentions content areas, Common Core, and 21st Century Skills Standards. So I recommend removing the terminology, Common Core, and changing it to the appropriate language, which I believe is Tennessee Academic Standards in this content area, and scanning all other documents just to ensure the terminology, Common Core, is not used.
Absolutely. We'll change before second reading.
Excellent. Thank you.
Comment, Ms. Hartgrove? I had a question first. Let me say that I'm glad to see the new courses in Entrepreneurship, Equine Science, Floral Design, and Operations. I did notice that we're retiring Principles of Public Service and Public Law and Budgeting courses. My question is, why are those being retired?
Sure. Great question. Every year when we do our comprehensive career review, we look at what enrollment has been and over the past three years, we've had three students enrolled in that program of study. And so that was the leading cause for that recommendation and then we didn't want to lose that public administration course, so that's getting folded up into a different program of study.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Further questions? Do I have a motion to accept with the modifications that Ms. Hartgrove suggested by removing Common Core? Do I have a motion to accept the? Do I have a second? Mr. Darnell seconds, any further discussion? No further discussion, Mr. Griffin, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Cobbins. Mr. Darnell. Mr. Eby.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards. Mr. Ferguson. Mr. Hamby. Mr. Jensen.
Aye.
Ms. Kim. Mr. Morrow. Madam Chairman, Hartgrove.
Aye.
Vice Chairman, you have nine ayes.
Thank you, the motion passes as presented. Next item is Ms. Angie Sanders, Organization Administration School Room.
Good morning, Chairman and Members. Angie Sanders, General Counsel for the State Board of Education. I'm presenting to you on first reading, revisions to the Organization and Administration of Schools Rule 052001-02-31. Tennessee Code Annotated 491302 requires the State Board to determine the ways and means of improving teacher, student, and school performance and to set rules and policies to accomplish those improvements. Our rules outline the various requirements for local boards of education regarding administration and operation of schools. When the State Board reorganized and renamed the District and School Operations Rules and the Academic and Instructional Requirements Rules in 2020 as part of our comprehensive rule review process, the requirement for local boards of education to develop five-year strategic plans was inadvertently removed from the rules. And we want to thank TSBA actually, who brought this to our attention. So what we're doing here is adding that language back into this rule, requiring local boards to develop a five-year strategic planned and plan and a district level improvement plan to operationalize the goals in their strategic plan in accordance with our district and school improvement policy. We will have a rulemaking hearing on this rule in between first and final reading and I am happy to answer any questions that you all have.
Any questions for Ms. Sanders?
I do not have a question, but I have a comment and recommendation, and that is with regard to page three, number eight, where it states it addresses the State Board of Education Master Plan. And I believe that this is not new language. However, when I read this again and again, I kept saying, well, what do we really mean by addresses the State Board Master Plan? And I think a simple modification of language that might state instead of addresses aligns with the State Board of Education Master Plan. And perhaps between this first reading and second reading, we could consider the appropriate language that would make it clearer what we really mean by addresses.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We can certainly address that between first and final.
Thank you.
Very good comment. I also have a question, that same number eight, when it talks about the plan. What happens once these plans are developed? Do they, are they submitted to TDOE for their review and approval or do they get published publicly or can they just go into black hole? It seems to me that the local boards would, should make these available early to their constituents. Are there any requirements there?
This rule does not speak to those requirements. Now, obviously, when they're developing those plans together, they're doing that thing, so it would be publicly discussed, but we can talk with TSBA to get more information about whether those are posted publicly on their websites. I know the district and school improvement plans that they develop in support of their strategic plan are all reported and sent to the Department of Education for review, but I don't know about the strategic plan.
I'd appreciate that. I think at least we ought to encourage them to post it on websites and. Any further comments or questions? We have a recommendation from the State Board staff, we have a motion to approve that recommendation. Mr. Edwards moves, do I have a second? Ms. Kim seconds. Further discussion? Mr. Griffin, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Cobbins. Mr. Darnell. Mr. Eby.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards. Mr. Ferguson. Mr. Hamby. Mr. Jensen.
Aye.
Ms. Kim. Mr. Morrow. Madam Chairman. Vice Chairman, you have nine ayes.
Mr. Griffin, the motion passes. Next item, G, Project Search, Ms. Ye.
Hi, Robyn Ye, Department of Education. I present to the Board on first reading the core standards for a new course, Project Search. Project Search is a unique business-led employment preparation program for students with disabilities following their first four years of high school. The program takes place entirely in the workplace and culminates into individualized job development. Students must apply and be accepted into the program and all programs are taught by licensed and endorsed special education teachers who also hold a work-based learning certificate. The student's IEP team would ensure necessary supports and accommodations that are in place for participation. The program requires a partnership between a school district and a business, and currently there are 10 districts in Tennessee that have achieved the necessary partnerships to have a Project Search program. A specific course code and approval for Project Search participation is needed to allow schools to schedule students consistently and transparently and offer data on the impact of student participation and success. And the department recommends acceptance of this item on first reading and State Board staff concurs. Happy to take any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Ye? I have a question. First, let me say, I think this is a great concept, but it says that acceptance is competitive. So what percent of the people typically would? Is it because there's not partners or?
That's a great question. I actually don't think I have the answer to it right now, but I'm happy to look into it and get back.
Mr. Morrow.
Just want to also say, this is fantastic. These 10 districts that have achieved necessary partnerships, is there, this is tied to a Partnership, yes. Goals of our IEP is the condition for the, respond to IEP but doesn't have partnership.
So I can also check up on that, but I believe that initially the school district would be the one to apply to create this program and prove that they have a business partnership within their community and then students would apply to be accepted into the, and then after that, then the IEP team, they would consult, obviously, to ensure that, you know, this program is in place and the IEP could accommodate for it as well, but the, the student's IEP team would meet once that student is accepted into the program to ensure that all accommodations.
So, but if I was a family and said, hey, I, this is a minute, this doesn't currently, does that turn force the district to go, it doesn't currently exist? It's now, it's available?
That's a good question. I would also have to go back and talk to our special teams about that and see exactly, you know, the requirements that are in place for districts to begin this program.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Further questions? If no questions, we have a recommendation, do we have a motion accept on first reading? Mr. Cobbins moves, do I have a second? Seconds. Further discussion? Question, Mr. Griffin, please call the roll.
Mr. Cobbins.
Cobbins.
Mr. Darnell. Mr. Eby.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards. Mr. Ferguson. Mr. Hamby.
Ms. Kim.
Kim.
Mr. Morrow. Chairman Hartgrove.
Aye.
Mr. Vice Chairman, you have nine ayes. Motion passes. Next item. H, Individualized Education Accounts. Ms. Soupe.
Good morning, Madam Chairman. And my name is Rachel Soupe. I am Assistant General Counsel for... At the Tennessee Department of Education. I am presenting this first reading item, which makes clarification, sorry, and clerical changes to the IEA. That's the Individualized Education Accounts Rule. The rule has been revised to improve readability and include some of the following changes and additions. We've added a definition of the term active IEP, which is used in the statute, but thus far has never been defined in rule. We've clarified that the department receives a request for participation in the IEA program at the date of application, when the window for the IEA program closes. We've added a definition of educational therapies. We've moved around some of the definitions, including the definition of inclusive educational setting, to the definition section. We've clarified that the power to make educational and financial decisions transfers to the student from the parent upon that student turning 18 years old. And lastly, we've clarified the timeline and determinations for appeals. A rulemaking hearing will be held and conducted by the State Board to collect public feedback to you first and final reading. With that, I'm happy to take any questions that you have.
Questions for Ms. Soupe? No questions? Can I have a motion to accept the first reading? Mr. Robbins, Moose. Mr. Edwards, did you second? Further discussion? Mr. Griffin, please call the roll. Mr. Darnell. Mr. Eby.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards. Mr. Ferguson. Mr. Hamby. Mr. Jensen.
Aye.
Ms. Kim. Mr. Morrow. Chairman Hartgrove.
Aye.
Vice Chairman, you have nine ayes. Motion passes. Ms. Soupe. Next, Mr. Jack Powers, English as a Second Language Program Rule.
Thank you, Board members. My name is Jack Powers. I'm the Director of Policy at the Tennessee Department of Education, and I'm here to present to you updates to the kindergarten screener in our English as a Second Language Programs Rule, specifically updates to the cut scores that are used to identify kindergarten students for direct English as a Second Language service. I will give kind of a little bit of a background for where we are right now and the need to make these updates to the cut scores, and then I'd be happy to take any questions. So the state uses WEDA as our vendor for our English as a Second Language assessments and screeners, and they have updated their screening instrument to reflect updated standards and to better align to scale scores for upper grades. And so the new screening instrument is called the WEDA Screener for Kindergarten, or WSK. WEDA will no longer accept the current kindergarten screener, called WEDA Access, after this upcoming 21-22 school year. Although WEDA will technically still support the WAPT screener during this next school year, meaning that they will still provide assistance in scoring of that screener should a district use it, the department has made the decision to switch to the new WEDA screener for this upcoming school year. The decision to switch to the new screener was communicated to districts over the course of this past school year, and teachers have already been trained on this new screener leading into the upcoming 21-22 school year. LEAs have been provided the new screener for this school year and will not have the ability to use the old WAPT screener because none were purchased and provided to LEAs. And so again, this item makes revisions to the rule to update the cut scores and to name this new screener that's used to provide direct ESL service to students. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Powers? No questions? Can I have a motion then to accept on first reading, English as a Second Language Programs Rule? Ms. Kim, Moose, do I have a second? Mr. Darnell, seconds. Any further discussion? No discussion? Mr. Griffin, please call the roll. Mr. Robbins. Mr. Darnell. Mr. Eby.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards. Mr. Ferguson. Mr. Hamby. Mr. Jensen.
Aye.
Ms. Kim.
Kim.
Mr. Morrow. Chairman Hartgrove.
Aye.
Mr. Vice Chairman, you have nine ayes. Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Powers.
Thank you.
Next item, School Health Policies, Permanent Rule. Ms. Kristi Ballard.
Good morning. I'm Kristi Ballard, General Counsel for the Tennessee Department of Education. Permanent rule item you have before you is the School Health Policies Rule 0520-01-13.01. It is on first read, so that means that there will be a rulemaking hearing conducted by the State Board between this first read and any final read to solicit public comment. This rule should be very familiar to you, as I presented an emergency rule on July 1 at the meeting, and I don't believe that there have been any changes to this rule. What it does is authorize LEAs and public charter schools to adopt policies allowing students who have been quarantined due to a positive COVID-19 test or exposure through contact tracing to learn remotely during that temporary period. It also sets forth some instructional and attendance requirements for those students who are learning remotely on a temporary basis. And with that explanation, I stand ready for any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Ballard?
Yes. Just, maybe just a curiosity. Is that by quarantine based on the parent's decision to self-quarantine based on their exposure or the school's determination of like, who gets to decide if you need to be quarantined or not?
Great question. Great question. And I think that the reason the rule is written to authorize school districts to adopt policies is because that can be determined on a case-by-case basis. We know over the course of last year, quarantine happened differently in different school districts. For example, some school districts were in areas where the local health department conducted all of the contact tracing, working, soliciting information from school districts and making, and helping to make those decisions. In other places, school officials participated, you know, and actually conducted the contact tracing. So I think giving school districts flexibility to work within their community and those standards, I think, is the way that this rule is written.
So just, it allows flexibility for each LEA to decide what's best for them?
To determine their policy.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Further questions? No questions? Do I have a motion then to accept on first reading, School Health Policies Permanent Rule? Ms. Kim, Moose, accept, do I have a second? Mr. Morrow, seconds. Further discussion? No discussion? Mr. Griffin, please call the roll. Mr. Robbins. Mr. Darnell. Mr. Eby.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards. Mr. Ferguson. Mr. Hamby. Mr. Jensen.
Aye.
Ms. Kim. Mr. Morrow. Chairman Hartgrove.
Aye.
Mr. Vice Chairman, you have nine ayes. Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Powers.
Thank you.
Next item, School Health Policies, Permanent Rule. Ms. Kim, Moose, accept, do I have a second? Mr. Morrow, seconds. Further discussion? No discussion? Mr. Griffin, please call the roll. Mr. Robbins. Mr. Darnell. Mr. Eby.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards. Mr. Ferguson. Mr. Hamby. Mr. Jensen.
Aye.
Ms. Kim. Mr. Morrow. Chairman Hartgrove.
Aye.
Mr. Vice Chairman, you have nine ayes. Motion passes. Ms. Ballard. Next item is Virtual Education Permanent Rule.
This is another permanent rule item on first reading, so there will be a rulemaking hearing conducted between the first read and the final read to solicit public feedback and comments. This is also another rule revision that should look very familiar to you. I presented the Virtual Education Emergency Rule at the July 1 meeting. I think there have been very minimal changes, maybe one tweak that was not a substantive change, so it should look very familiar. And this is the rule that further clarifies the difference between a virtual school and a virtual education program. Over the past several months, as many of you know, school districts have asked a lot of questions about remote options available in the next school district. So this rule further clarifies what a virtual education school is versus a virtual education program, and sets forth instructional and attendance requirements more specifically in those rules. And with that brief explanation, I stand ready for...
Questions for Ms. Ballard?
Just a quick comment. I really appreciate the work that we've done as teams with you, Kristi, and your colleagues on this rule and the one that you just presented. I think in both cases, these are going to be very helpful to districts. I'm also particularly excited about the Virtual Education Program Rule, because I think it just expands the options for students in terms of what they can access. It hopefully will help us build on some of the lessons of COVID in terms of what role technology really can play to accelerate student learning moving forward. So I look forward to seeing how districts and charter schools use this additional flexibility to create, in some cases, more of a hybrid approach to give students more access and opportunities to different courses. Thank you for your help on this.
Further comments or questions? I have a question. So just for clarification, says a student may participate in a virtual education program without enrolling a virtual school. I just want to make sure, clarify, students can, could go to a virtual, in a virtual program, any other school district, if the district would accept them, or what's the...
I think that is what has been going on for years. I think you have had virtual programs in school districts that allowed maybe a student from another district to access a course that maybe was not available in their home district, and this rule would not prohibit that from continuing to take place. This rule is simply to clarify and provide some more robust definitions of program versus school.
Thank you. Further questions? You have a recommendation? Do I have a motion to accept that recommendation on first read? Mr. Edwards, Moose, do I have a second? Seconds. Further discussion? No discussion? Mr. Griffin, please call the roll. Mr. Robbins. Darnell. Mr. Eby.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards. Mr. Ferguson. Mr. Hamby. Mr. Jensen.
Aye.
Ms. Kim.
Kim.
Mr. Morrow. Chairman Hartgrove.
Aye.
The motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Ballard. Next item is Educator Licenseur Rule. Mr. Michael Durle.
Good morning. Michael Durle, Senior Director of Educator Licenseur and Preparation at the Department. This item is the Educator Licenseur Permanent Rule. Like the last two rules, this one should look a little familiar to you. It's a bit of a combination between what you all voted on back in February and also on an emergency basis on July 1. These sections of the Educator Licenseur Rule govern the issuance, renewal, advancement and reactivation of all educator license types. Changes before you address the necessary revisions that will allow implementation of Public Chapters 125, 493 of the 2021 Legislative Session, including but not limited to significant revisions to out-of-state initial licensure pathways, provisions related to assessment requirements for specific out-of-state applicants, reactivation of an expired Tennessee license, and we are proposing dropping the requirement that assessments be no more than five years old. Lastly, this revision includes multiple recommendations that you saw during the February meeting related to school services personnel licensure issuance and reactivation pathways. Be happy to take any questions you may have.
Questions for Mr. Durle. First, I would like to call out Jack Powers on this, because bi-weekly updates that were provided from our last meeting.
I've got too many items, is the problem.
You do. All right. Thank you. Well, this is hard.
I do want to add, if you don't mind me jumping in and complimenting Michael Durle for his excellent work. To put it mildly, he continues to amazing, amaze me with the great work that he does. He's an asset to the department and the due diligence with which he looked at this from every angle and tried to do what was in the best interest of education in Tennessee, because we often hear from people across the state, you know, we have the shortage. We also want to have the highest quality educator in the classroom with our students. And I think the work here is certainly in the, headed in that direction. I think that this is what this leads to, Michael. So, and I always call you Michael, but you're Mr. Durle when we're in a public meeting. So thank you so much for your great work.
Appreciate those comments. This was absolutely a little, a small army of folks working on this and making sure it was as clean as possible.
Further comments or questions? Done. Can I have a motion to accept? Mr. Edwards, Moose. Second? Seconds. Further discussion? Mr. Griffin, please call the roll. Mr. Robbins. Darnell. Mr. Eby.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards. Mr. Ferguson. Mr. Hamby. Mr. Jensen.
Aye.
Ms. Kim. Mr. Morrow. Chairman Hartgrove.
Aye.
The motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Ballard. Next item is Educator Licenseur Rule. Mr. Michael Durle.
Good morning. Michael Durle, Senior Director of Educator Licenseur and Preparation at the Department. This item is the Educator Licenseur Permanent Rule. Like the last two rules, this one should look a little familiar to you. It's a bit of a combination between what you all voted on back in February and also on an emergency basis on July 1. These sections of the Educator Licenseur Rule govern the issuance, renewal, advancement and reactivation of all educator license types. Changes before you address the necessary revisions that will allow implementation of Public Chapters 125, 493 of the 2021 Legislative Session, including but not limited to significant revisions to out-of-state initial licensure pathways, provisions related to assessment requirements for specific out-of-state applicants, reactivation of an expired Tennessee license, and we are proposing dropping the requirement that assessments be no more than five years old. Lastly, this revision includes multiple recommendations that you saw during the February meeting related to school services personnel licensure issuance and reactivation pathways. Be happy to take any questions you may have.
Questions for Mr. Durle. First, I would like to call out Jack Powers on this, because bi-weekly updates that were provided from our last meeting.
I've got too many items, is the problem.
You do. All right. Thank you. Well, this is hard.
I do want to add, if you don't mind me jumping in and complimenting Michael Durle for his excellent work. To put it mildly, he continues to amazing, amaze me with the great work that he does. He's an asset to the department and the due diligence with which he looked at this from every angle and tried to do what was in the best interest of education in Tennessee, because we often hear from people across the state, you know, we have the shortage. We also want to have the highest quality educator in the classroom with our students. And I think the work here is certainly in the, headed in that direction. I think that this is what this leads to, Michael. So, and I always call you Michael, but you're Mr. Durle when we're in a public meeting. So thank you so much for your great work.
Appreciate those comments. This was absolutely a little, a small army of folks working on this and making sure it was as clean as possible.
Further comments or questions? Done. Can I have a motion to accept? Mr. Edwards, Moose. Second? Seconds. Further discussion? Mr. Griffin, please call the roll. Mr. Robbins. Darnell. Mr. Eby.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards. Mr. Ferguson. Mr. Hamby. Mr. Jensen.
Aye.
Ms. Kim. Mr. Morrow. Chairman Hartgrove.
Aye.
The motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Ballard. Next item is Educator Licenseur Rule. Mr. Michael Durle.
Good morning. Michael Durle, Senior Director of Educator Licenseur and Preparation at the Department. This item is the Educator Licenseur Permanent Rule. Like the last two rules, this one should look a little familiar to you. It's a bit of a combination between what you all voted on back in February and also on an emergency basis on July 1. These sections of the Educator Licenseur Rule govern the issuance, renewal, advancement So I just want to share that I appreciate the team um being very open, being very receptive to our concerns. Um, and so I I look forward to seeing what happens over the next year.
Further comments, questions? Mr. Edwards?
Uh, I do want to add, you know, what Nick just said. You know, I think this, for me, hit uh, it wa- it was something a little bit out of form in February. It took a while to arms around it. You guys have been absolutely great in helping us along the way. I think it's a good product now. And yesterday, uh, we ha- we were talking about the the shortage of counselors. Sarah came up with, dang, you know, this would be a great opportunity for the endorsement. Which you ought to be really happy that she got that in your neck of the, but uh, but it's a good example of what might happen with a lot of problems that we got out there. So uh, congratulations.
I also want to say, I think this is, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Morrow.
Sort of piggyback on Nate Morrow, on what uh Nick and Mike said, just that it really highlighted by the counselors yesterday and what was said about giving the option of having unqualified or uncertified or untrained but willing people in front of kids versus trained and qualified people in front of kids. Like, do whatever it takes, right? Like, if we can get great, well-trained people in front of kids and counselors. So as much work as we've done on, you've done on getting all of the the this done from an educator perspective, we understand the importance of the mental and emotional health. And so, again, thanks to Sarah. Um, you know, doing that with those who are engaging students in their emotional wellbeing, talking about one to 500 in an elementary school, one to 350 in a middle and high school. Um, I love the idea of innovation for the state of Tennessee in getting students with great access to mental health agencies or well-trained people in the mental health world.
I'll just jump in quickly, Michael, to maybe save you a heart attack. It really was a good conversation yesterday, and I wasn't necessarily insinuating that we should have an add-on for the full counselor program. But I was really thinking most specifically about the career in college advising and mentoring. But I feel like that's a place where no number, no, no ratio of counselor to students will ever get us fully where we need to be. So giving students what they deserve in terms of that work specifically. So we can talk, but that was my thought. Thank you for all the work you and your team have done on this.
Yes, I would, I would also like to say that I think this has been a perfect example of how, actually, when the board started here, we weren't all on the same page. Different ideas, thoughts, and didn't. Working closely with the department and back and the bi-weekly reports that you guys helped us better understand what was being poured on this. This shows a great example of apartment and benefit of the students. Can't say how the boat's going to come, but if it comes the way I think it's going to come, giving things in the right direction.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to accept uh this, Mr. Edwards moves? Have a second. Mr. Morrow seconds. Any further discussion? No discussions. Uh, Mr. Griffin, please call the roll.
Mr. Collins. Mr. Darnell. Mr. Eby.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards. Mr. Ferguson. Mr. Hamby. Mr. Jensen.
Aye.
Ms. Kim? Mr. Morrow? Chairman Harkgrove?
Aye.
Vice Chairman, you have nine eyes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Uh, as it's not quite 10 o'clock, I propose that we continue. Action for final readings, uh, before we take a break with that, okay? First item. Mr. Durline, item I, educator licensure policy.
Yeah, that's the one we just did. We're on uh item B now. That one was final reading.
Item B.
Thankfully.
We passed that on, though. Literacy and specialty areas stands for educator prep. Mr. Durline?
Thank you. Uh, following passage of the Tennessee Literacy Success Act, Chapter 2 of Public Acts of 2021, Session, this recommendation includes significant revisions to the EPP literacy standard 17, uh, with an emphasis on foundational skills, the use of high-quality instructional materials, and trauma-informed instruction. Additionally, this item includes minor edits, uh, clarity in a number of like to. Um, and I did want to note that between first and final reading, the department gathered feedback from the Educator Preparation Working Group, specific EPP literacy folks, TEA, and SCORE. And so you'll see a number of uh that reflect the feed. And on that item, I'd be happy to take any questions you may have or colleague if they get.
Questions for Mr. Durline?
Just a, a one comment and um, see if we can continue to think about. I think I was appreciative of the additional reviews that were able to be provided in between first and final reading because I think these standards are so important in our literacy efforts as a state that we're engaging in across the board, and the preparation piece is so critical to making sure new teachers come in, teach reading. Uh, I think the one thing I would have loved have seen that we just didn't have time to do was to make sure that these standards really were geared towards the teacher candidate as opposed to reflecting the language of what K-12 students should do. I mean, that's obviously the end goal. But I think as we think about the rubrics and how we review programs, help sort of tee up any changes in practice that are needed at the program level, we can just rather to make sure it's teacher-friendly language. So they really see what this should look like in practice for their teacher candidates.
That's a, a good call and and definitely something. Patient granted. Process.
But look forward to seeing this implemented. Thanks for the good work.
Any further questions or comments? Then can I have a motion to accept final reading? Ms. Kim moves. Have a second. Mr. Hamby, seconds. Further discussion? No discussion. Mr. Griffin, please call the roll.
Mr. Collins. Mr. Darnell. Mr. Eby.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards. Mr. Ferguson. Mr. Hamby. Mr. Jensen. Mr. Jensen. Ms. Kim? Mr. Morrow? Chairman Harkgrove?
Aye.
Mr. Vice Chairman, you have eight eyes.
Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Durline. Next, uh, we have two items together, consent, uh, high school policy and mid- policy, Ms. Sarah Williams.
Good morning again. Sarah Williams, Senior Director of Current Technical Education. I'm at the department for the high school policy, item C. Um, this item proposes updates to the policy to clarify requirements for the four-year plan of focused and purposeful high school study um that aligns with the middle grades policy 2.102. This item also um proposes updates to the related work-based learning, um, or WBL framework section of the policy to clarify the requirements of work-based learning opportunities. And finally, this item revises the current industry certification language to the new industry credential terminology in the graduation with honors, state honors, and state distinction sections to align with the recent updates of the Tennessee Promoted Industry Credential um list that is released by the department in November of 2020. This list includes of 157 approved industry credentials available to high school students in Tennessee that aligns to the workforce needs within the state. The list is inclusive of, inclusive of a broader industry credentials and includes industry certifications, certificates, licenses, and badges. Final revisions were made between the first and final reading to clarify that students who are offered work-based learning experiences by their LEA shall have access to the structure outlined in the process, I'm sorry, in the policy. Additionally, um, technical edits were made um to the move on when ready section of the policy to ensure alignment with the law. The Department of Education recommends approval of this item on final read. The SVE staff concurs with this recommendation. Happy to take any questions.
Questions? Ms. Williams?
Uh, this Larry Jensen had a, a couple of questions, if I may. Uh, is this a line, and this may be for, for uh another dancer, with the Eric effort, the, the economic recovery?
That is a great question that I'll have to dig into a little bit more, and we'd be happy to provide a response with you after.
Okay. And then uh, my, my other question is, could we get, could I get a list of those 157? I'd just like to look at it.
Sure, absolutely. Um, we will, we will send that on through Amy after the meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely.
And this is Lily in Harkgrove. I have a clarification question because Mr. Jensen mentioned Eric. Uh, my mind goes to the um Tennessee Department of Economic and Community Development. If they provided recommendations to you based on um the different credentials that are needed in different areas of the state, because I know in the past, um, I would see a listing and local districts would say, this does not provide a credential that's needed by XYZ or ABC company in this region of the state. But then at that time, several administrations ago, it just wasn't approved. So I ask that to gain clarity about the involvement of the local as well as um state ECD with regard to their input.
Sure. Um, each year, whenever we open up for um credential recommendations, um, we're, we're open to recommendations from anyone in the public. Um, so ECD would be included in that. Um, but then once we get our submission of the recommendations to review, and we do include partners from across various state agencies. And so um as we're heading into that season, um, that will start next month for us for um the 2223 school year listing. Um, so I'll, I'll ensure that that ECD is definitely a part of that review process um for those that are recommended. And districts do have the opportunity, um, if it, if a credential isn't really um applicable statewide, um, similar with our special programs of study, um, in regards to course, courses being presented, um, districts can have um a district-specific or a region-specific credential and that would also be on this promoted list, but just specific to those, to those areas, or it would be valued.
Yes. Thank you. That's very helpful. Now, you did indicate that there were 157 that were approved. Um, how many did you not approve, and what would be the basis for non-approval?
Great question that unfortunately I don't have um here with me today, but I'll be happy to pull that out. Um, from, from memory, it wa- it was probably less than a handful who, who were not approved. And the reasons um that they weren't approved um would be that they didn't align to workforce needs um, but across the state is is prob- what I would say would be the most common reason. And but I'd be happy to pull um that number as well as um do a summary of, of reasons why submitted recommend or submitted industry credentials were not approved.
Okay, and just to clarify, if a credential is not used across the state, then there may be a reason why you would not approve it for a specific region of the state that actually needs that credential.
Correct, yeah. If it's, it's not approvable across the state, but it's really important to um the, the local district and/or region, um, there is an approval process to get, to get those on the list so that, and we can meet the needs of the students where they are.
Excellent. Very good. Thank you so much.
Yeah, absolutely.
Uh, th- this Larry Jensen again. I, I guess I want to express a, I don't know if it rises to the level of the concern, but um, are we, uh, and Chairman Harkgrove sort of touched on this a minute ago, but it, it seems to me to be a critical point. And that is that are we talking to the local, not just the school or, or the district, but also are we getting feedback from, for example, a Chamber of Commerce or a economic development entity in a subregion within the state to hear from them what they think is needed? Uh, I, I will, will give you an example that comes to mind, that the, there is a big push in the West Tennessee on what I would call agronomy or agriculture-related things. And um, I, I just, I, I know, like, for example, Bolton High School, Cairo High School are, have some focus there, but are we actually talking, for example, to the Agri Center in, in Shelby County and saying, what do you see as needed in order to create these things in cooperation with a school? So I, again, it's getting the industry feedback and not just relying on the, on the local district to figure out what industry in their area needs. I, I, and, and you don't have to answer this. It's just a concern that I have that we, that we're doing this, and is it really applying effectively to the particular region?
Sure. Um, we do engage with, with an, a number of industry partners, um, both statewide and um regionally specific through our industry advisory councils for each career cluster. Um, and so for, for the example, um, that you gave with the um folks in West Tennessee around the, the, I always lose the word, but around the agriculture field, um, our, our program managers do work with their industry advisory councils um to, to ask if the credentials that we're offering are appropriate and if there are any new ones that we need um to be considered. Um, and so that is definitely one of the resources we use to um both review as well as identify new credentials um to be reviewed. So I would say yes, um, and, and multiple times throughout the year, we're reaching out to those industry advisory councils um for feedback from everything affecting the industry or the, the career cluster, whether it be industry credentials, standards, um, and such.
Question. It, um, Section 2, when it says move on, says uh move on when ready act authorizes public high school students in any county excluded by TCA 4968103. What counties would be excluded from?
Going to turn to some of my colleagues.
This is Angie Sanders, General Counsel for the State Board. Um, the way that law is written, it's a population ban. And I believe that that population ban excludes Williamson.
You have a concern with that? You're just saying, is that a, is that a, I mean, I, I know it's, it's written into, that's, that's a law written, but is that sort of seems, it's open, buddy, but one seem of a concern?
Yes. Um, that, as you said, was the way it was determined when that certainly has to let.
Great. Thank you. Nah, Nathan likes to talk to me. Look at her.
Good discussion. Any further questions? Okay, since this is a, a buying this item with the next item, uh, sent item. Ms. Williams, why don't you go ahead? The middle grade policy?
Sure, absolutely. Um, the middle grade policy 2.102 is designed to strengthen the supports provided to middle-grade students as they prepare for high school and post-secondary opportunities. This item updates, um, this item proposes updates to the policy to clarify the requirements for the four-year focused and purposeful high school study um in align with the high school policy 2.103. This item also adds language related to CTE coursework and industry credential attainment in the middle grades. There have been no changes um between first and final reading. Again, the Department of Education recommends approval for this on final reading, and the SVE staff concurs with the recommendation. Happy to take any questions.
Questions for Ms. Williams on middle grade policies? If no questions, then can I have a motion to accept both high school policy 2.103 and middle grade policy 2.102 as recommended? Mr. Darnell moves. Do I have a second? Mr. Collins seconds. Further discussion? Further discussion? Mr. Griffin, please call the roll.
Mr. Collins. Mr. Darnell. Mr. Eby.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards. Mr. Ferguson. Mr. Hamby. Mr. Jensen.
Aye.
Ms. Kim? Mr. Morrow?
I would just want to request to explain my vote on the record, I want to vote aye. But would caveat that, I think it's important for us, 496813, Williamson County. Exclusive to. Exclu, one.
Madam Chairman Hart Grove?
Aye.
Vice Chairman, you have nine ayes.
Nate's point, we've had a vote, how can we follow up on that? Sarah.
Question, Nathan certainly can give you some of the backstory, but I would, I mean, eight in particular, I would reach out to Williamson County and talk to the current director, and, and they will probably help you understand a little bit more about how that law came into being. But I don't disagree that we should be looking at it, you know, obviously it's going to require legislative change. But I think that's one productive step that would help us forward with those conversations.
Satisfied? Thank you, good questions. Ms. Ye, statewide dual credit course approval, and we also have combined this with approved high school course policy. So first statewide dual.
Aye. Ravin Ye, Department of Education. I present to the board on final reading revisions to three statewide dual credit courses. Introduction to Business, Pre-Calculus, and Introduction to Plant Science. Statewide dual credit courses are college-level courses taught at the high school level by trained high school teachers. The Tennessee Board of Regents and University of Tennessee are responsible for convening post-secondary faculty to develop statewide early post-secondary opportunities, including statewide dual credit. State Board, TBR, and UT have final approval for conferring credit for these courses. Between July 2020 and January 2020, January 2021, TBR convened college faculty to review and update statewide dual credit courses. The review included an analysis of student performance on the challenge exams and feedback from high school teachers. The revisions presented today are a result of those faculty meetings, and there have been no changes since first reading. The Department recommends approval of this item on final reading, and the State Board staff concurs. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Ye?
Yes, so the approved high school course policy identifies courses that have been approved by the State Board for instruction in Tennessee schools. You all just heard the statewide dual credit courses that are on final reading at this meeting, and should you all approve them, these courses will need to be added to the approved high school course policy. The courses Introduction to Plant Science and Pre-Calculus are already listed on the policy, so this item just adds Introduction to Business to the list. Department of Education recommends approval of this item on first and final reading, and State Board staff concurs.
Any further questions for Ms. Ye? If none, do I have a motion to accept both items E and F statewide dual credit course approval and the course policy 325, recommended by the Department?
Larry Jensen, so moved.
Ms. moves, do I have a second? Mr. Cobbins seconds, any further discussion? Cobbins, please.
Mr. Darnell. Mr. Eby.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards. Mr. Ferguson. Mr. Hamby. Mr. Jensen.
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Kim? Mr. Morrow? Chairman Hart Grove?
Aye.
Vice Chairman, you have nine ayes. Question passes, thank you. And before we call the next item, I'm going to suggest that we take a 10-minute break. Clock here says 10:17, so we can. Start it again. Next item is universal state screeners and state adopted benchmark assessments permanent rule.
Good morning, Board members. I am Lisa Coons, the Chief Academic Officer for the Department, and I am presenting on final read the universal student screeners and state adopted benchmark assessments permanent rule. Pursuant to chapter one and three of the Public Acts of the 21st, the 2021 First Extraordinary Session, the State Board of Education is authorized to promulgate emergency rules to implement the Tennessee Literacy Success Act and the Tennessee Learning Loss Remediation and Student Acceleration Act. The Literacy Success Act of 2021 requires LEAs and public charter schools to annually administer a universal reading screener to each student in kindergarten through grades three during each of the three administration windows established by the department. The permanent rule describes various requirements related to the universal screeners, how the screeners are going to be used to identify students who have a significant reading deficiency, and how the process for LEAs and public charter schools to request permission from the State Board to use locally chosen universal screeners. The Tennessee Learning Loss Remediation and Student Acceleration Act of 2021 requires the Department to implement an innovation, innovative benchmarking assessment pilot program to provide the Tennessee Universal Reading Screener, the Tennessee Universal Math Screener, and state adopted benchmarks to LEAs and public charter schools to more frequently measure student learning and address student learning loss. Between first and final read definitions of at risk for significant reading deficiency, pre-test, post-test were added to the rule. A3 students are determined to be at risk for student reading deficiency if they score between the 15th and 40th percentile on a nationally-normed universal reading screener. Revisions also clarify that these students shall be regarded as priority students for the purpose of implementing the Tennessee Learning Loss Remediation and Student Acceleration Act. Department of Education recommends the approval of this item on final reading. The State Board staff concurs with this recommendation. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, I'm sure there are questions. I would just like to first ask the question, can you describe the process that you went through to select the screener? Or approve?
For policy 3302?
Yeah.
I'm hap, would you prefer I do that during the policy reading?
Sure.
Okay.
During the policy.
I am well-prepared to do that in either place, you just let me know where you want me to do that.
All right. Fine. Any questions on the rule then? No questions, do I have a motion to accept the rule? Mr. Cobbins moves, do I have a second? Looking for a second. Ms. Kim seconds, do we have further discussion? No discussions, and Mr. Here, you want to call the rule?
Sorry, one second. Mr. Cobbins. Mr. Darnell. Mr. Eby. Mr. Edwards. Mr. Hamby. Mr. Jensen.
Aye.
Ms. Kim. Mr. Morrow. Madam Chair Hart Grove?
Aye.
Mr. Vice Chair, you have nine ayes.
Next item, continuous learning plan policy, Ms.
All right, y'all are keeping me busy. Item 3H is the Continuous Learning Plan or CLP, policy 3.210. As you know, districts and schools began implementing continuous learning plans for the first time in the 2020 through 2021 school year under the emergency circumstances of the COVID-19 pandemic. This spring, the State Board established the expectation that LEAs maintain CLPs on a continuous basis moving forward to be ready to respond to future states of emergency or natural disasters. The rule clarifies that CLPs may only be implemented when the governor declares a state of emergency that affects the operations of a school or district, and the district or public charter school obtains the permission from the Commissioner of Education to implement their CLP. This policy on final reading provides further details about the required components of the CLP. We sought to strike a balance of having a document that could be implemented quickly in an emergency situation while also making sure that it was not too onerous on school districts, given that we all certainly hope that we do not have significant emergencies or natural disasters with any great frequency when these would have to be used. This policy was developed in consultation with the Department of Education based on common implementation challenges as well as best practices that they saw over the past school year, and there have not been any changes since first reading. Happy to take any questions you may have.
Questions for Ms. Owen. No questions? Do I have a motion to accept Continuous Learning Policy? Policy 3.210. Moves. Do I have a second? Ms. Kim, seconds. Do I have a further discussion? Discussion? Mr. Cobbins. Mr. Darnell. Mr. Edwards. Mr. Ferguson. Mr. Hamby. Mr. Jensen.
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Kim. Mr. Morrow. Chairman Hartgrove.
Aye.
Your motion passes. Moving on next to textbook and instructional materials waiver rule, Ms. Owen.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Textbook and Instructional Materials Waivers, the permanent rule 052001-18 is our next item. As you know, about a year ago, the State General Assembly transferred the authority for approving textbook waivers to the State Board of Education with public chapter 770. Over our first year of being involved in this practice, we identified several potential process improvements, some of which were included in public chapter 471. For example, that gives the State Board the authority to establish timelines for when districts may submit waivers. That helps us plan for our workflow and identify when different types of waivers are likely to be requested. It does still allow for off-cycle waivers if districts experience certain emergency circumstances. This rule incorporates the required timeline. It also addresses public chapter 205, which adds requirements prohibiting certain materials related to common core state standards. Between first and final reading, the State Board conducted a rulemaking hearing to gather public input and also continued to work closely with our partners at the Department of Education and with several school districts that thought they may be in need of a waiver request. One example of clarifying this process on final reading was that we identified different processes for what we call limited use adoptions in a situation like a virtual school as opposed to district-wide adoption in terms of the composition and role of the local adoption committee. We are happy to continue to seek input as we refine this process over the coming years. We recognize that this is only our second year going into this space, so we're going to continue to seek input from local education agencies as they request these waivers and go through our processes. Happy to take any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Owen? Get many comments at the.
Not through the rulemaking hearing as much. It was more questions and comments that came up from districts that were, particularly those starting a virtual school for the first time and wondering about the curriculum they were using in the virtual setting, whether or not it required a waiver. That led to realizing that the process for those limited use adoptions might need to look different than a district-wide adoption, and also trying to clarify for districts the difference between a textbook or a supplemental material. So those are some things we've been producing guidance documents to help out as well.
Thank you. Further questions? Motion then to accept the textbook? Instructional Material Waiver Rule? Moves. Do I have a second? Seconds for the discussion? Mr. Cobbins. Mr. Darnell. Mr. Chairman Eby. Mr. Edwards. Mr. Ferguson. Mr. Jensen.
Aye.
Ms. Kim. Mr. Morrow. Chairman Hartgrove.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item is Educator License or Discipline Rules, Ms. Angie Sanders.
Thank you. My name is Angie Sanders, General Counsel for the State Board of Education. State Board Rule 05200203-09 governs the denial, formal reprimand, suspension, and revocation of a Tennessee educator license and the denial of an application for a temporary. Additionally, State Board Rule 05200203-12 governs the issuance of temporary permits to unlicensed individuals under certain limited circumstances in alignment with Tennessee law. This item contains revisions to these rules to comply with statutory changes passed during the 2021 legislative session. Specifically, revisions to sections .09 and .12 of these rules provide that directors of schools are required to report individuals who are teaching on a temporary to the State Board of Education in the same manner as if they are required to report educators who are licensed. Additionally, the rules contain clarifying revisions around the board's review process for reports received on individuals who are teaching on a permit as well as the process when an individual indicates an affirmative answer to one of the personal affirmation questions on the permission. We did hold a rulemaking hearing for this rule and no comments were offered during the process. Without any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Sanders. Any questions for Ms.? Just going to have a motion. Educator License or Discipline. Mr. Edwards move? Discussion? Discussions, Mr. Call the roll. Mr. Cobbins. Mr. Darnell. Mr. Edwards. Mr. Ferguson. Mr. Hamby. Mr. Jensen.
Aye.
Ms. Kim. Mr. Morrow. Chairman Hartgrove.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next group, we have K through U field charter schools appeals. We group together as a consent agenda. Ally Gaffey.
Hello again, Ally Gaffey, Interim Director of Charter Schools for the State Board. On final reading today is a collection of our authorizing policies that have governed our work as a charter school authorizer. On July 1st, the State Board's charter schools officially and successfully transitioned to the Tennessee Public Charter School Commission, thus eliminating the need for these policies. In anticipation of this transition, the commission also approved its own set of authorizing policies to replace the ones that we are repealing. Do you take any questions?
Questions for Ms. Gaffey? Questions? Going to have a motion to accept? Motion for items K, L, N, O, P. Just a second. Discussion, Mr. James, please. Mr. Cobbins. Mr. Darnell. Mr. Hamby. Mr. Jensen.
Aye.
Ms. Kim. Mr. Morrow. Chairman Hartgrove.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item, Charter School Governing Body Training Policy, Ms. Gaffey.
Thank you. The next item is State Board Policy that includes the list of certified and approved training courses for our charter school governing body members to complete as part of their annual training requirement that's outlined in State Board Rule. There have not been any changes to this item since first reading and happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Ms. Gaffey? No questions? Going to have a motion to accept Charter School Governing Body Training. Mr. Edwards, so moves. Do I have a second? Morrow, seconds. Further discussion? No discussion? Mr. James, please call the roll. Mr. Cobbins. Mr. Darnell. Mr. Vice Chairman Eby. Mr. Edwards. Mr. Ferguson. Mr. Hamby. Mr. Jensen.
Aye.
Ms. Kim. Mr. Morrow. Chairman Hartgrove.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item, repeal all charter school LEA policies, Ms. Kelly Crumman.
It's me again.
Ms. Gaffey.
So this item is a series of policies that the State Board adopted to govern its function as the LEA of its authorized charter schools. And again, with our schools transitioned to the Tennessee Public Charter School Commission, this item feels all of those LEA policies. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
Not a question, just one comment. I want to mark this moment because this is the end and I think our work as charter authorizer, charter LEA, and I want to thank Ally in particular, you know, when Testoval took the job as the charter commission. Sad to lose her. We are so grateful for Ally to step in and make this such a seamless transition. I mean, it's been a non-event because of the real work that you've done in partnership with the commission team, but thank you serving in that capacity and for making a smooth and seamless transition for our schools in particular.
Other questions? Do I have a to accept the poll charter school? Oh, move. Seconds. Further discussion? Mr. James, please call the roll. Mr. Cobbins. Mr. Darnell. Mr. Eby. Mr. Edwards. Mr. Ferguson. Mr. Jensen. Mr. Jensen.
Aye.
Ms. Kim. Mr. Morrow. Chairman Hartgrove.
Aye.
I do have a question for Mr. James. Were you ever? State Board Master Plan.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair Amy Owen, Director of Policy and Research for the State Board. I have before you today the 2021 through 22 State Board of Education Master Plan. TCA 491302 requires the State Board to develop and maintain a current master plan for the development of public education kindergarten through grade 12. As you know, and as we discussed yesterday at our workshop presentation, the Board also sets five-year strategic goals. And in 2020, the Board went through a fairly comprehensive process of stakeholder engagement and collecting feedback to set goals for the 2020 through 2025 period, and then identified master plan goals for the previous year that would begin our work moving toward those 2025 goals. As we discussed yesterday in the workshop, we briefly recapped our progress in year one. This master plan lays out the action steps for our second year towards those 2025 strategic goals. Select action steps for the upcoming school year include continuing to develop and refine rules and policies about early literacy in alignment with goals set by the Governor, Legislature, and Department of Education, establishing clear plans for high school students to chart their path into the workforce or post-secondary education, and increasing the supply of effective educators, including both teachers and school leaders. We'd like to thank the members for your input throughout the spring, especially our Chair and Vice Chair. We have gotten multiple rounds of very, very detailed feedback and worked through how to prioritize different steps across the years of these strategic goals. I'm also excited to share that my colleague Ally Gaffey will be taking some of the reins of the master plan planning process and will be updating you throughout the upcoming school year on the staff's progress and our work with other agencies in support of these action steps. Are there any further questions, comments, or surprise me last-minute revisions before y'all vote on this one?
Questions for Ms. Owen? I would just like to say that I think this is one of the most important things we do as a board charged by TCA, basically set the steps. Well, the development of goals for K. Doing this, certainly there are certain goals that we have control over, certain goals that we don't have control over. And I reported this this year. We worked on things. But it also requires districts, et cetera, their goals and successful posts. Thank you for all the work that's been done and putting together the plan. Look forward to us working toward those goals and getting reports back next year showing how we've all met those.
Thank you.
And Vice Chairman Eby, the only thing that I want to add, because I think you certainly said it very well, my sentiments, because the process that the staff took us through, I think, was very thorough and provided us with every opportunity to weigh in and provide our input. And I think we could look at this a dozen times and find ourselves wanting to refine it further and further, and we have every opportunity to do that each year. And of course, we are highly dependent on the data for many of the response, many of the goals and benchmarks that we laid out in this particular year. And so that's always our challenge, and I know our team will do everything in their power to ensure that we get that information so that we can see the progress and do our due diligence toward moving the needle in the right direction for education and for our students in Tennessee. So thank you very much. Great work.
Good comment, Sherwin Hartgrove. It does require data, data coming from several different directions. Certainly, we rely heavily on the department for that data and work together on other things. No other further questions? Do I have a motion then to approve our master? Cobbins moves. For the second. Seconds. Please call the roll. Mr. Cobbins. Mr. Darnell. Mr. Eby.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards. Mr. Ferguson. Mr. Hamby. Mr. Jensen.
Aye.
Ms. Kim. Mr. Morrow. Chairman Hartgrove.
Aye.
Vice Chairman, you have nine ayes. The motion passes. Next item, Professional Assessments Policy, Michael Durlin.
Hello again. Michael Durline, Senior Director of Educator License and Preparatory Department. This item is the Professional Assessments for Tennessee Educators Policy. And this is on first and final read due to the timeline that operating on these two assessments. So this recommendation is to adopt regenerated assessments in the areas of reading specialist and middle grade science 68. ETS goes through this process to regenerate assessments as standards change, update the content of those assessments, and we're recommending adoption of those assessments with that score. In addition, we've made some minor clarifications to the language out to align with licensure rule that you all voted on beginning on July. Happy to take any questions you may have.
Questions for Mr. Durline? Got the right ones. But if I recall correctly, this one talks about five-year.
That's correct.
What guarantees do we someone 20 years out? Standards and the qualities that we get.
Yeah, so in any case where an assessment would be required, they would have to take the assessment that is currently required in this policy. So we look across the assessments that are approved in Tennessee. I think it's safe to say none of them because ETS and piercing for the standards of the time require that educators, which means it could be more than five-year. Say in virtually no cases, it's eight or 10.
Thank you. Other questions? Questions? Do I have a motion then to accept the Professional Assessments Policy 5.105? Questions? Do I have a motion then to accept the Professional Assessments Policy 5.105? Second. Further discussion? Question, Mr. Griffin, call the roll. Mr. Cobbin. Mr. Darnell. Mr. Eby.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards. Mr. Ferguson. Mr. Hamby. Mr. Jensen.
Aye.
Ms. Kim. Mr. Morrow. Chairman Hargrove.
Aye.
Mr. Vice Chairman, you have nine eyes. Thank you, Mr. Griffin, and the motion passes. Next item, I see Basic Education Pop- I see BEP allocations for 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair Jack Powers of the Tennessee Department of Education. And it is my pleasure to be here before you today presenting the BEP allocations for fiscal year 2020, 2022. So the attached allocations for fiscal year 2021, 22, provide funding of the Basic Education Program, which represents just about $5 billion in spending on public education. And specifically this year, these allocations represent $140 million in funding appropriation improvements to the BEP. And I do want to call out, for those of you that are kind of keeping track from year to year, kind of the difference, that $140 million is quite a bit bigger than last year, and there's two reasons why that I want to kind of take a moment to highlight. The first is the Governor's commitment to our teacher labor market by providing an increase to the instructional salaries and wages component, as well as the General Assembly, of course, through the budgetary process, okaying that recommendation. The other kind of reason for that increase that I'll call out here is public chapter 398, which was the Governor's BEP Hold Harmless Legislation that passed during this past session. You'll see here in the Fiscal Analysis Impact portion of this item, an explanation of how the BEP Hold Harmless Legislation worked. I'm happy to answer questions about that. But basically, we had 111 school districts in Tennessee. And if it weren't for kind of the bold action taken by the Governor's Office and the Tennessee General Assembly to hold them harmless through the BEP, they would have experienced a drop in funding coming into this next school year. And so again, I just want to highlight that commitment to Tennessee schools and districts and students that this allocation represents. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Questions for Mr. Powers.
I have a question. Mr. Powers, for clarification, because I know that you all were working on this diligently to get this information to us in time for this meeting. In past years, we've had a comparison year over year. Is it possible to still see that? I'm not advocating that we wouldn't approve today. I just would like to see where these counties and school districts were last year versus where they are this year, if that can be provided.
Absolutely. I'd be happy to follow back up with that and provide it to you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Further comments or questions? I'm answer questions. Do we have him approve the basic education application for 20? Have a second. Seconds. Further discussion? Mr. Griffin, please call the roll. Mr. Cobbin. Mr. Darnell. Mr. Eby. Mr. Edwards. Mr. Ferguson. Mr. Hamby. Mr. Jensen. Jensen. Ms. Kim. Mr. Morrow. Chairman Hargrove.
Aye.
Mr. Vice Chairman, you have eight eyes. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before you move on, before you move on, I'd like to clarify that Mr. Jensen was trying to get in there and provide his vote, but I think you were talking at the same time, so he missed that. I believe we have nine.
Aye. That's perfect. That's correct.
Very good.
Thank you. Education Preparation Providers, Specialty Area Programs.
Thank you. Michael Durline, Senior Director of Educator Prepar- As you all are well aware, the department is tasked with conducting the ongoing process of educator preparation providers and the specialty area licensure programs that they offer. In addition, we conduct a review of any entity that is seeking to become an EPP in Tennessee. So these recommendations before you include both of those. So there's one recommendation for ongoing approval of an existing EPP. That EPP is University of Tennessee Knoxville. In Tennessee, CAPE accreditation is an optional process, and UT Knoxville did go through that process. We then took that information to our Advisory Committee on Educator Preparation to review the findings and determine an equivalent recommendation to bring to you all. So that recommendation before you is full approval of the provider, as well as all specialty area programs that they offer. I don't recall. Do you vote on these separately, or?
I think it's just one.
Okay. And then we have three prospective EPP recommendations for you as well. If approved, that would bring us to 43 EPPs in Tennessee. The first is Lane College. The Department of Education reviewed Lane College's proposal for a recommendation of initial approval as a new EPP and associated specialty area programs in elementary education. I will note this is an iterative process, so there's a significant amount of back and forth that happens with prospective providers. And after that process was completed, we're recommending that Lane College be recommended for initial approval. The second prospective EPP is Arate Memphis Public Montessori Residency, which is a branch of Libertas Public Charter School in Memphis. Similarly, we had quite a bit of back and forth with the folks at Arate. They submitted their proposal. It was reviewed. Feedback was given. And ultimately, we are recommending them for initial approval of the EPP and specialty area programs in early childhood and elementary education. And then lastly, Knox County Schools applying to become an EPP for now for the preparation of occupational features. We reviewed their proposal for a recommendation of initial approval as a new EPP and associated specialty area programs in occupational education. And we are bringing to you a recommendation of initial approval. Happy to take any questions you may have on these items.
Questions for Mr. Durline.
Mr. Michael, refresh my memory, particularly for like Knox County School. How do we assure, I understand, come forward for approval upfront? Policies or procedures, how they're down the road, how are we assured that the quality that they hide is state Tennessee?
Yeah, great question. So first, I'd say that one thing that I think we pride ourselves on is that the initial review process and the ongoing review process is grounded in the same set of standards. So a prospective EPP is applying as just that, what they plan to do. Whereas an ongoing review or a comprehensive review is what have you done to demonstrate that you've met the standards? And so in these three cases, these entities have all kind of presented that proposal of what they're going to do. And then within three years, they will go through a full approval review. At that point, they've generated data. We have information about how their program's operating. And then they fall into the regular cycle of comprehensive reviews, annual reporting. If they're generating enough leaders, they'll also be part of the State Board's Teacher Preparation Report Card. And so they kind of all fall into that structure once they're
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Cobbin.
A comment more so than a question. First, happy to see Lane College on this list. I think with HBCUs across the state, we have an incredible opportunity to address the diversity goals that we have for educators. Two, Libertas School of Memphis. I was a former board member of that institution for three years. My son attended school there for three years. It's a very well-run school in an underserved section of Memphis, and so bringing more Montessori opportunities and, of course, more diverse opportunities for learning. Happy to support that.
Thank you, Mr. Cobbin. Mr. Edwards, you have comment?
So I think the model that Knox County had forging in CTE. Those are hard positions to fill because a lot of people who have teach those subjects do not have the time potentials to teach. What Knox County can do is recruit great people and train them to do this job, and I think it's a model that's liable to take off, and a lot of, I hope they do it. I'm certain they will. Because it can absolutely fill a whole bunch of holes out there. And with that, if you would allow me, I would make a motion to approve this.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Good comment. And then we have a motion then. Do I have a second? Seconds. Any further discussion? No discussion. Mr. Griffin, please call the roll. Mr. Cobbin. Mr. Darnell. Mr. Eby.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards. Mr. Ferguson. Mr. Hamby. Mr. Jensen.
Aye.
Ms. Kim. Mr. Morrow. Chairman Hargrove.
Aye.
Vice Chairman. Nine eyes. Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Durline. Next item, Assessment Standard Setting for Social Studies and Science, Ms. Ren.
Good morning, board members. Assistant Commissioner for Assessment, Casey Hogner-Ren. Glad to be with you this morning to present recommended cut scores for our science, social studies, and alternate science TCAP exams. According to Tennessee Code, it is the duty of the board to set rules, policies, and expectations for evaluating student progress, achievement, and for evaluating teachers, schools, and districts. The department has created and revised our TCAP exams in science and social studies to align to the newly adopted standards from several years ago. These tests were first administered in 2019-20 school year, but after the cancellation of assessments in spring of 2020, we needed to come back and administer these exams operationally again in the 2021 school year. Also during this year, we've undergone an extensive qualitative process to standard-set these exams. And as we spoke about pretty extensively yesterday, that's a process that has involved about six months of meetings of Tennessee educators, spots for nearly 200 educators across the creation of our performance level descriptors, and then reviewing those performance level descriptors qualitatively against the standards set by this board for academics here in the state, as well as individual test items, questions from the exams to set these recommended cut scores. And we did not speak yesterday a lot about who was involved in that, so I will take a moment to say of those educators that were involved, they represented 47 different districts across the state. All eight of our core regions were represented, and we even had some retired educators and post-secondary faculty involved in that process. So an incredibly diverse group of educators, average years of experience was over 10 years of that group. And I'm very pleased for the recommendations that they bring to you today. So you have a full executive summary of those standard-setting meetings and the recommended cut scores for science, which includes grades three through eight in biology, social studies, which includes grades six through eight and US history, and our alternate science exams, which again are three through eight in biology. And so we recommend, we fully support the educators in recommending these cut scores to the board and staff approves as well. So I'm happy to take any questions that we didn't get a chance to talk about yesterday.
Any questions for Casey?
Let me just say that yesterday, he was the best explanation enough to how these cut scores are set in all the sense in the world. That before the depth that people go into setting those, and I appreciate the presentation.
I will share that with the team, so with our vendors and the facilitators of all of those meetings, especially virtually this year. It's a very long process, but we're very proud of the teachers who gave their time to be a part of this process and very well.
So we have a recommendation. Do I have a motion to accept this? Mr. Edwards moves. Do I have a second? Mr. Darnell, seconds. Any further discussion? Mr. Griffin, please call the roll. Mr. Darnell. Mr. Eby. Mr. Edwards. Mr. Ferguson. Mr. Hamby. Mr. Jensen.
Aye.
Ms. Kim. Mr. Morrow. Chairman Hargrove.
Aye.
Mr. Vice Chairman, you have nine eyes. Motion passes. Thank you. Next item, Educator Evaluation Policy, 5201.
Good morning. I'm Martha Morris, Senior Director of Educator Effectiveness at the department, and I am here to present on Educator Evaluation Policy 5.201. Educator Evaluation Policy 5.201 further defines the Educator Evaluation Rule 05200201 to provide additional context and detail regarding evaluation requirements. This first-read item presents additions to Appendix A and Appendix B of the policy, as well as revisions to include the Tennessee Universal Screener or other universal reading screener approved by the State Board as an alternative growth model pursuant to the Literacy Success Act. Appendix A of the evaluator evaluation policy includes the approved charter school alternative observation models. This item includes the approval of one new charter proposal for an alternate observation model which has been reviewed and approved by department experts. This would be the Noble Education Initiative Teacher Feedback and Evaluation Tool. This item also presents updates to the approved achievement measures in Appendix B of the policy. The following measure has been reviewed by department experts and recommended for use as an achievement measure for the 2021 school year and beyond. This is the Lexia Rapid Assessment Core 5, grades pre-K through 5. Additionally, in November 2020, the department revised the process to review and promote industry credentials. This item also includes revisions to add several industry credentials to the approved achievement measure list. Finally, pursuant to the Literacy Success Act and the Learning Loss Remediation and Student Acceleration Act, this item also makes a revision to allow teachers in non-tested grades, pre-K through 2, to use the Tennessee Universal Reading Screeter, Tennessee Universal Math Screener, or other universal reading screener approved by the State Board as an approved alternative growth model. The Department of Education recommends approval of this item on first and final reading. The SBE staff concurs with this recommendation, and I am happy to take any questions.
For Ms. Moore.
Hi, Martha. I have to just put on the record, I mean, having lived in the evaluation world for a long time in my former role, the use of the screener for growth measures gives me some heartburn. I know it's in the law. But I was encouraged to talk to Commissioner Schwinn at our last check-in just about the work that you all are doing, particularly with your tag around how to make sure that where districts are wanting to have that option to their educators, that we've got some real tight, secure ways of standardizing both the administration of those screeners and the way that those scores are calculated, how they're reported into our team system. And you know better than anyone, there's a lot that goes into making sure those growth scores are valid, reliable, you know, and reflect the work that teachers are doing with, in a way that we can leading to strong LOEs that are used in all different kinds of ways. I mean, the EPP Report Card, the reviews that we do of our programs, who are training teachers, the way we think about salary changes at the district level, so much depends on getting that right. So thank you for the attention you're giving to that. I know we'll be interested in sort of, as that comes together, getting a report from you or your team on how that looks moving forward.
Thank you, and I would say that it has been a tremendous collaborative, cross-team effort to make sure this is working like it should. So we appreciate that. Thank you.
Further questions? No questions? Can I have a motion? No questions? Can I have a motion then to accept educator evaluation policy 5201? Mr. Cobbin's moves. Do I have a second? Seconds? Further discussion? No discussions? Then Griffin, please call the roll.
Mr. Cobbin. Mr. Darnell. Mr. Eby.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards. Mr. Ferguson. Mr. Hamby. Mr. Jensen.
Aye.
Ms. Kim. Mr. Morrow. Chairman Hargrove.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Motion passes. Next item, universal screener policy.
Hello again. Lisa Coons, Chief Academic Officer for the department, presenting the universal screener policy 3.302. The Tennessee Literacy Success Act requires LEAs and public charters to annually administer a universal reading screener to each student in kindergarten through grade three during each of the three administration windows established by the department. Based on both statute and on state board rule, as discussed earlier, LEAs and public charters may choose to administer the Tennessee Universal Reading Screener, which is provided at no cost from the department, or a universal reading screener approved by the State Board. This item presents a new policy, universal screener policy 3.302, to further define the rule we mentioned earlier, providing the list of state board-approved screeners identified by the department that LEAs may use to fulfill the requirements of the Literacy Success Act. The list of screener options were generated after the review of the foundational literacy skills plans submitted by LEAs and public charters to the department between April 1st and June 1st this year. The recommended reading screeners in this policy meet the requirements of the Tennessee Literacy Success Act, including all of the requirements of the RTI squared framework and the dyslexia screening law, say dyslexia. As Vice Chair Eby mentioned earlier, I'm going to go through the policy or the process that we went through, through the foundational literacy skills plan review that reviewed all of the screeners. So in that foundational literacy skills plan, districts and charters were required to report on their instructional materials, their schedules, their intervention plans, and then they had to outline how they screened students for the reading components of RTI and say dyslexia. That includes nine to 12 components for reading. It includes multiple components for mathematics. In their foundational literacy skills plans, the reviewers, three of which are on my team, their subject matter experts, all have doctorates and are technical reviewers, including a school psychologist. They used district vendor and in-depth reviews of all sources that were reported on the foundational literacy skills plan. So if a district reported that they were using, all of those were reviewed, and they included a technical review using the National Center of Intensive Interventions. So they went through a rubric for all things that were reported. Currently, districts use a suite of things to measure all of those components for RTI and dyslexia. Those suite of components were what were reviewed against that metric required by law. And then those that met that metric, as reported by districts, were recommended on this list. The Department of Education recommends approval of this item on first and final reading. The State Board of Education staff concurs with this recommendation. Happy to take any questions that you have.
Thank you. I think you know that I was challenged by several districts actually within my congressional district that use iReady.
Yes.
And understand, I guess, that they, you have gone back and re-looked at that. If iReady diagnostic for reading and iReady early reading pass.
That's correct.
That those, that that would in the approval list. And so I'm going to make the motion that we add that onto the list of screeners.
In preparation for that motion, the team went ahead and reviewed the entire suite of iReady because what was reported in the foundational literacy skills plans was part of iReady and did not include those early reading tasks. Those early reading tasks are required for the encoding component. So they went ahead and we reached out to iReady and asked for their full suite. Their full suite met the same criteria that the other products on that list meet.
So for further discussion, I will add that onto the list. I will move, if I, second to move. We'll vote on that in a second, but. Further questions, Ms. Coons with regard to personal screeners. Yes, Mr. Morrow.
Things on, okay. Nate Morrow. So how many not approved districts submitted to the process? Just like, I know we had, I think it's eight on there approved. Do you know how many were not?
There were lots of components. So star reading as an entire component. There are parts of star reader, early literacy for K-3 that is improved, but star reading as a whole thing was not approved. So there were parts. iReady, which we've talked about. There was only other, two other pieces of screeners that were not approved. The suite, there was only one district that had a suite that is not on that list.
Okay.
And they indicated that they were switching to the Tennessee Universal Reading Screener. So there was only one district that doesn't encompass that. 97% of our districts use three on that list and the one that was contracted on Wednesday for the Tennessee Universal Reading Screener.
Okay. Then my second question is just, how are we, so as we're, districts are gathering all, the department's gathering all, you know, I think the idea for the universal screeners had a consistent, you know, program to get present level of performance, areas of growth, where we need to do interventions, where is there that risk? How are, how's the department going to gather the data from so many different universal screeners and then have it where there's a dashboard or a consistent way to identify sort of statewide as we're trying to step into literacy growth where we can get to target and disaggregate the data? So will all of those different screening systems have a way to speak to each other?
So you're asking for like an apples-to-apples comparison?
Yeah, just so how, if we're looking at state benchmarks, or if we're looking at, you know, comparing different counties or different districts and who's doing well and collaborating over the ideas. I just have some concern that if there's this many different screeners, which I understand why the districts want to do that, just how does the department then look at those scores? Offer development, offer accountability, all of the parts you need? And there's so many different programs. Concerned that they're not speaking to each other and we're not getting apples-to-apples data because of all the different types of screeners?
The national norming comparison that is required in the RTI framework allows students to be normed on the same framework. So they put children in line and say, this is where you want our national norms. So that is an apples-to-apples comparison.
So all of those different screeners will be able to do that?
That was part of that technical review and that, I have to get my school psychologist's words, the National Center of Intensive Intervention manual that she used, make sure that they all have that national norming in the same way, in the same process, and meets that threshold. Then each, and after you approve this, we will send this information out to those approved vendors. They will have to send us an aggregate. They will also have to send us all of those sub-test scores that are required as part of that dyslexia component. And then we will be able to take that aggregate score, as we passed earlier, that 15th to 40th percentile will be those at-risk students. And that's an apples-to-apples comparison regardless of screener using that national norm system. And then those students who are in that 14th percentile are students who are categorized as having a significant deficiency. And that would be an apples-to-apples comparison. That helps us understand programmatically where districts are regardless of the screener because it's on that national norm. However, what we really want to know to help districts and help children are those individualized scores underneath that say, your child is struggling with encoding, which AKA spelling. Your child is struggling with fluency. How do you, those things will also be reported by all vendors. So we will have abilities to understand where students are across the state in those subcategories. In addition, the Tennessee Literacy Success Act requires home literacy reports in family-friendly language that then provides that information to family. Those home literacy report that were reported in the foundational literacy skills plan also require us or districts and with our support, resources for families that are free, strategies for families, and then the district has to provide that intervention structure. So we'll be able to take those foundational literacy skills plan where they were reported, the national norm aggregates, and then that subscore data, and start to understand what programs are working well, where the gaps are in state, but also the districts.
Very answer this is, what do you think the turnaround time? So there's three screening options. What do you think the turnaround time hitting? So I've taken the screen as a parent receiving that. Is there a, is there a guideline for how quick that gets turned around for interventions to happen?
And I, I know Sarah mentioned this earlier in talking with the commissioner. It's mostly an automated process now while you're giving the screener, entering the data, and then the calculations happen inside the platform. It will be fairly, 10 days is what they have to do to report us. Then they have to report to parents within third.
So a 40-day cycle from this to the parent have it in their hand?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
I got a couple of questions. It's really, they're questions, but go over again, I think I'm asking back to 15% and the 40, 40, what are those?
Yep. So by Tennessee Literacy Success Act, we have to note you're also asking risk for significant deficiency, still that 15. A student who is zero, 15, and that, say you line up 100 kids, national norm, those kids who are at that zero to 15 in the back of the line, that's that significant reading deficiency. Those kiddos who sit 15 to 40, they're at risk. And so that, that's that additional component that we added in the preceding rule.
So a lot of times, we talk about students reading on grade level at the end of third grade. And somebody can help me, but it seems to be like in the low 30%, something like that. It's low reading on grade level, which means we're told that the likelihood of being able to advance on, and that's why we're doing the intervention in the summertime. Seems that if you, and I know the feds did the 15%. But the 15% plus that 40%, I mean, the getting up to 40% still leaves a pretty significant gap of people that maybe not in home culture we're using, but they seem pretty at risk to me. We're kind of plugging, we're trying to use government policies and not government to fulfill those roles, but really, we're, I'd have stepped back and say, all right, what's the universe of kids that are really at risk? And what are we going to do to get all of them?
Yep. That's why we have the RTI squared framework. And one of the things we're looking at this year, in particular with learning loss and learning acceleration, are what components exist, what are working, what additions we need. First, you have to look at that core instruction that all kiddos are receiving. Is that high quality in teaching children to learn? So as you saw in the Tennessee Literacy Success Act and in the foundational literacy skills plan, districts had to, and charters had to report what are the instructional materials and the way in which you teach reading instruction to all children? Because if kiddos aren't getting good first instruction, there's going to be more students not ready and more students who are not performing where they should. So first, you have to look at that first instruction. Then we have to look at what are we doing to intervene? And are we intervening in a way that moves kiddos out of that first of 0 to 15 and that 15 to 40? So those lower kids, we have to have a better core instruction. And we have to have a better instruction program in reading. We are training, right now, we are at 8,000 teachers learning more current science of reading, contemporary processes to teach reading. So we are working on that core instruction, which will move the entire group of students. Then we have to look at intervention for 40%, which is, you know, 2, 40% of our kiddos is quite a bit of how to intervene on top of that core instruction. So that core instruction is equally important in that 40 to 50, 50 to 60% of kiddos.
You got, it's just a rough number, 70%, not wrong. And screening identifying the bottom 40% still that area of kids at bandwidth that you maybe just said it, and I just didn't understand, just repeat it.
Yep. So our core instruction has to be great for kids, right? Their first level, time to read, learn to read. The first opportunity, what they get in their 120 minutes every day, has to teach them how to read well. If it's not teaching them how to read well, you're going to have a whole bunch of kiddos in that below 40th percentile, learning how to read. So we have to make sure that our first chance to teach reading is good before we worry about intervening all of the kids, right? We have to make sure that we are teaching reading, it's high quality, we're using great materials, kids are learning to read every day. So we have to do that as well. But there is a group of kiddos, I think what you're getting at is this kid, this bubble group, so to speak, this kiddos that are in the 40th to 50 percentile. We are putting out Tennessee All Core tutoring, gap learning, making sure that kiddos are on grade-level standards. I would say those kiddos who are in that gap more so need more time to learn how to read, more time, more specific support. And that's more of a tutoring lens than the deep level of intervention we're talking about, about being at risk for a reading deficiency or significant reading deficiency. That is a much more intensive level of support than the kiddos who might be in the middle. Those kiddos need some more time, which we're going through summer programming, through tutoring, through the Tennessee All Core opportunity. That, that's, that's a different, that's more on that first reading, what are you learning in your standards versus this deep skill-based intervention?
Let me, let me try, try something here too. So, because I think we're getting our percentages crisscrossed. So if you have 100 students, then the bottom 15 most at, you know.
Significant reading deficiency.
The bottom 40 are at risk. That's 100 students. Our reading on average at 30, 30% reading on average is that 50% of our students are below the, only reading at grade level, 50, more than, more than 50% of our students are not reading at grade level. That's not the 15 and the 40. That's, that's a different.
That's percentile versus actual percentages in the state.
Right. Exactly.
Yeah.
And that gets me to the question that I have, and it goes back to the question I think Mr. Morrow was, was alluding to. If, if I have eight different screeners, okay? And the screeners are not, are reading out, you know, these are the bottom 15, these are the bottom 40. How do I know that the results from one screener is going to give me the same results from another screener? And say if I'm number 16, or I'm number 41 on one screener, do we do a comparison, have that person take the other one? Because if they turn out number 14, they're going to get special care. How does that work?
That's what the psychometricians do when they put together, and the school psychs and the experts, when they put together that National Center of Intensive Interventions, they do all that norming and correlation to make sure if I take this assessment, it's the same as this assessment, it's the same as this assessment. That was part of that analysis of those screeners. I will say they use very similar products. It's just a different vendor using very similar products.
Is it a quantitative test or a qualitative test?
They're all fairly quantitative. I would say that the oral reading fluency has several measures. They're all scored, like miscues, things like that. So they all fall in the quantitative range. It's not like I believe my student can't read well.
Okay.
Two sort of separate questions. One, there's, I don't, I think variations of us have gotten questions on, is there emotional assessment as a part of this or is this strictly literacy-based? And that's just kind of a.
This rule is for the reading screeners, which is the reading component.
Okay. That's what you guys are doing. It's not other stuff.
The Tennessee Universal Reading Screener is separate.
Okay, gotcha. And then the other question I had, just kind of a flip on this. Are we, is there going to be a way for districts to to be a way for districts to share information on what's working? So if we're giving these universal screeners and the different districts are finding, see some great results, there's going to be a way to collaborate and share what's working so we don't have to.
So we have 92 districts currently. We're reopening the opportunity for more districts to participate in an early literacy network. So districts who participated, we had over 122 districts participate in reading training this summer. They all had the opportunity to participate in what is called an early learning network, early literacy network. As part of the early literacy network, they get grant funds to work on literacy in their schools. As the other part, they come together regionally and have community or practice meeting to share best practices, share what they're seeing, talk about challenges they may be having, and that runs for the next two years and is based on the Reading 360 initiative.
I'll just say, as you see exemplary places, we'd love to know about that, to go visit, to talk to different superintendents or schools that are, that work on the literacy subcommittee. That would be a great source to have.
Absolutely. I think we are currently working on leading indicators, so what we're observing in classrooms. We do have five model districts that we'll be launching around foundational skills in August. And then we have a reading summit, a virtual summit that will be launching in September that will give some best practice sharing. I'll make sure that we get you connected to that.
Thank you.
This Larry Jensen had a question, too, if I can. We're projecting out three years from now, what does this look like to be successful?
What is the universal screening policy?
Yeah. In other words, we're talking about this program three years from now, what we're doing right now, what would you be happy to report that would look like, you know, we have achieved what we're trying to do?
I think we need to better understand where we are, given the pandemic and given some of the learning loss and gaps. We are indicating some significant issues in first through third grade. We've had districts report double-digit loss on their screener data this spring. It's hard to predict what that learning acceleration will look like for the next year. I would hope that we are at least 10 percentage points above on the reading achievement from 2019, but it is hard for me to predict success until we better understand the learning loss that we experienced, to be honest with you, in the 2021 school year.
So if we're, I mean, because we do have, you know, the 2019 obviously is, and COVID period gives us a pretty fragile base to compare. Is that a fair statement?
Yep. Absolutely.
So I guess, how long does it take to sort of get back to equilibrium on that? And I think I heard you say it, but just want to clarify that.
I think we are putting every initiative together to make sure we can get back as fast as possible. Having 11,000 potentially teachers train this summer, doing the early literacy network, launching the universal screener, we are putting every process as possible to accelerate learning and to get back on track. I don't think in this unprecedented time I can accurately predict what we will need to do and where we will need to go. We still don't have accurate third grade data that we have yet. I don't know what, we have never required districts to report their screening data. So we don't have a good understanding or historical baseline on screening data. That will happen this year for us to understand where we are with screening data, to do that apples-to-apples comparison, to know where we actually are in early grades literacy. We're going to have to take this screening data and understand it at the end of this year. And I think at the end of this year, then I will be well poised to tell you where we need to go, what we need to do based on this process. We are working with several researchers to get that in place over the course of this year to better understand that.
I guess what I'm trying to get at is, and again, I understand and compassion for where we are, but just to set expectations for what we might as a board and the public expect, you know, over, and I think you said it well, I'm not arguing at all with you, just wanted to make sure that we had a foundational understanding of where we are today and then, you know, where we might be. And you were talking about how we're going to get there. So I think you've answered the question and I thank you.
Sure. Just real quick, yeah, Larry, I think excellent question. You were not with us for the workshop yesterday, and I mentioned it very briefly this morning, but at least in terms of state level results, next week, we're going to see participation rate information and a little bit more sort of the descriptives of who tested and where. And then the week following, they'll be releasing the statewide results from the spring's assessment. So I know that's not the early grades, but it'll at least give us some understanding as a state of where we are. And, you know, I think Lisa, between you and Casey, will follow up with you in terms of understanding the results of both that data and also, you know, the fall screening data. You're right. The good news is we're putting a lot of important things in place to better understand early grades learning, which we haven't had as a state in the past. And so I think we're making some steps in the right direction and we'll all want to really look at that data and understand together. But thank you for all the information you provided. I just have one more question. And this is piggybacking off of, I think, something Nate was asking, but you and I spoke earlier this week, and it was very helpful to me because there's been some confusion about the mental health component. And again, this is just specific to the Tennessee screener, I believe. But if you could just clarify on the record for our members, anybody watching, sort of what you explained to me the other day in terms of where that applies and where it doesn't, as we look at the list of other approved screeners and also the Tennessee Universal Screener.
Yep. The Tennessee Universal Reading Screener is part of the Literacy Success Act. It requires that reading component, that math component, and does have an optional component that districts could use or not use. It's kind of like going to Walmart. You have the option of picking a lot of different things in Walmart, right? Districts are paying for the list that you have. The Tennessee Universal Reading Screener provides options for districts, both in reading, math, and assessments that measure classroom behavior that might be infringed with being able to do well in the classroom. Those are options that districts would have. That classroom behavior component has a requirement and will roll out later in the year that if districts chose to use that option, that would have parent requirements, there's parent components to that. It is a partnership between a teacher and a parent and that student, understanding what might be going on. Like if I'm fidgeting and I can't sit still, I'm going to have a really hard time reading. So what could the teacher do? Would it be preferential seating? Do I need to go in the front of the classroom? Do I need to have a fidget spinner? Do I need to sit on a yoga ball? It's that kind of thing that helps the teacher attack reading at all angles. If we have 33% of our kiddos reading, we want to provide every opportunity that a Walmart store could provide, and that's the intent of the Tennessee. To have all kinds of different tools at no cost for districts that they can opt in.
Thank you. Any further questions?
I would just add one comment. It seems to me that the pandemic has caused us, and I think it's a good thing to hopefully accelerate our thinking about how we address some of the shortfall. So I really appreciate the work that's being done. And I think there maybe is a little bit of a brightness in what's happening now because of pandemic. So just a comment.
Good comment, Mr. Jensen. If there's no further discussions, we have to vote on the amendment first, and it was to add eye-ready diagnostic for reading and ready early reading task onto the list of approved universal screeners. Griffin, please call the roll.
Mr. Darnell. Mr. Eby. Mr. Edwards. Mr. Ferguson. Mr. Hamby. Mr. Jensen.
Aye.
Ms. Kim. Mr. Morrow. Chairman Harkgrove.
Aye.
Vice Chairman, you have nine ayes.
Amendment passes. Now we'll vote on the overall motion with the, Mr. Griffin, please call the roll. Mr. Parliament Terry. Can I have a motion? Mr. Edwards, you want to make the motion? Do I have a second? Mr. Cobbins, second. Further discussion on that? Vote on the motion.
Mr. Cobbins. Mr. Darnell. Mr. Eby. Mr. Edwards. Mr. Ferguson. Mr. Hamby. Jensen.
Aye.
Ms. Kim. Mr. Morrow. Chairman Harkgrove.
Aye.
Vice Chair.
Motion passes. Thank you, Coons. Very good discussion. Next item, annual performance goals for 2021, 22. It looks like it's Mr. Powell.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. And for the second meeting, I think in a row, I have the distinct pleasure of closing us out, at least on like the regular agenda items. Jack Powers, Tennessee Department of Education, I'm presenting the 2021, 2022 annual performance goals. State law, of course, requires the State Board of Education, in conjunction with the Commissioner of Education, to establish appropriate performance goals and measures for schools and LEAs. Annual performance goals and measures, which are known to our schools as annual measurable objectives or AMOs, provide schools and districts with targets that help current performance, help to interpret current performance and prioritize future efforts. Unlike other states, Tennessee sets each of these targets individually for each school, district, and student group, using the most recently available and accurate measure of performance as the starting point for each goal. Due to COVID-19 school disruptions in the prior two school years and its varying impact across Tennessee, schools, the most recent year of data upon which to set performance goals is from the 2018, 2019 school year. The Tennessee Department of Education will be maintaining the AMO set for the 2020, 2021 school year, which represent the most recent complete data for each measure prior to the pandemic. The approach taken in setting these AMOs is explained in a rationale document that was previously provided to board members. And that rationale document aligns with federal and state laws and guidance from the past two years. I do want to say that these predictable targets will help schools focus on students by returning to the performance levels of students prior to the pandemic. By receiving board approval before the beginning of the school year, schools and districts can take action early in the year to drive towards these goals and better serve all students. And the last thing I will note is that Public Chapter 299 of the 2021 Legislative Session requires the Commissioner of Education and a working group to seek approval from the State Board for any changes to the formula used to calculate AMOs. The formula used to calculate these AMOs is the same one used in prior years and has not changed. With that, I'm happy to take any questions that board.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. I would like to raise a question that was brought to me at mention this morning by directors of a school system here in Tennessee. Some of it, I think, has to do with, of course, we just got the AM, letter of necessity that came in, talked about why we're just getting them now. But the districts, obviously, are just finding these out, too. But let me just read this letter to you, and I think it describes the problem pretty well and how you address it. Hope you're doing well. Last night I received word concerning the setting of AMOs on today's agenda. I apologize for the late email as today's email is so close. Our team is concerned about the AMO threshold being set based on the 2018, 2019 score since everyone has already felt the sting of learning loss, impact of COVID on schools. Some districts have experienced this more than others based on numbers of factors. See my note below from my data specialist. This is like a change of standards year. They would have never held us to the old TCAP levels of proficiency when the next test arrived. To set our current goals so high, they're establishing a threshold where most people will struggle to hit the AMO. For us, we could hit the absolute performance threshold for two or a three. However, that'd be the max score available. Using fictional numbers, if we were at 34% in 2018, 2019, and the AMO was set based on that, our 2020, 2021 scores are at 16% because of the learning loss. Reaching the AMOs would be near impossible. Our elementary schools would especially struggle to even come close. We have a plan and already started the difficult task of overcoming the impact, but it'll take some time to see the results. Protective measures put in place against these AMOs would be greatly appreciated. So the question is, and I understand what they're saying, we held harmless for the 2020, 2021, but this is impacting, and I think it sort of goes back to what we were hearing yesterday from current assessments, how you use this data. Obviously, this is going to be something that's going to cause districts concerned. Thoughts on that?
Sure. I mean, and first and foremost, I will say that I certainly recognize the challenge that our schools and districts have faced over the past, gosh, I think it's been 16 months now. You know, as we've traveled around the state this summer on our bus tour, you know, we've heard about those challenges. We've seen districts that are beginning to overcome them. But I don't want to, I don't want to make light of those challenges. But what I'll say here is that we also cannot lower the bar that we have for our students as a state. You know, these AMOs, when you look at them, you know, the ready graduate, chronic absenteeism achievement, even though they're percentages and numbers on a page, they're really students, right? And so, you know, the department believes, we believe that we cannot kind of lower that bar for achievement based on the pandemic. I'll note the Tennessee Learning Loss and Student Acceleration Act, the word acceleration, I just want to highlight that. You know, that is acknowledging the fact that we will have some students who may have experienced learning loss, but we have put supports in place and believe that they can accelerate their learning to hit these targets. You know, Dr. Coons did a good job, I think, of highlighting some of the supports that we have available when she presented on her last item. But things like the summer learning camps, Tennessee All Core tutoring opportunities, and a number of other things, Reading 360, we believe we have put the supports in place and we have talented educators and district professionals to get students back on track if they have experienced learning loss.
Thanks, Jack. I completely understand and agree with not lowering the bar in terms of ultimately where we're trying to go with student learning. I guess I want to clarify, too, on the record, I mean, what we're setting here, AMOs, we're not talking about our accountability system today. And I think that's going to be a separate conversation that we sort of danced around yesterday with the Center for Assessment. And I liked the analogy that Chris Domaleski used. He said it's sort of like maybe turning on a dimmer switch as we think about how to get back to a world where we have accountability in place. So just maybe help us get some peace of mind there in terms of what we're voting on and what we're not yet deciding in terms of what stakes would be attached to some of these AMOs.
That's right. So I mean, that's a good point. You know, any question about our accountability system, of course, would require an act by the General Assembly. And so these AMOs are really about setting bars for student performance. And, you know, they do not, they do not factor into, you know, priority school designations. They're really about student performance and making sure that, you know, districts have a benchmark to work towards and helping students kind of reach goals and helping the school reach goals for things like graduation rate, chronic absenteeism, things like that.
So in the same vein, I got an email during the meeting, actually, with a clarifying question. I don't know if you can answer this, but it may be more about how we support districts and understanding particularly that attachment one. But as I pull that up and look at it here, and I know it's similar to last year, but just help us interpret, you know, we are talking about a number of different measures, like you said, absenteeism, ELA, math, you know, there's a number of different metrics that factor into AMOs. But the targets on attachment one don't specify what content area, what measure we're talking about. They just have the percentage for the target and then the target double percentage. So I don't know if you can clarify on the record if we need to work with districts to make sure that they can interpret accurately what this means in terms of practical implications.
Sure. And I appreciate that. I actually, you know, made sure to check to ensure that that looks the exact same as what was publicly available last year. I think it might be one where we need to just reach out and ensure that we have kind of the correct communications and documents that districts need to interpret those. And it may also be that that, I'm sure we have that, it just isn't something I think the board's historically published. Again, that document you see is the same one that has been published publicly in prior years. So with just the grade bands, not specifying subjects and things like that.
I can't answer that.
We, this Larry Jensen, we may have one person working the board, but I had a similar email expressing same concern.
I think, I think what you're saying is setting the bar for student performance, this doesn't address the accountability.
That's absolutely right.
Any other questions, comments for Mr. Powers?
Just want to say, I guess maybe make sure I'm understanding correctly, it seemed to highlight, I mean, gone from universal screener to the benchmark setting to trying to look yesterday of how do we, yes, we have. And so I think the hard thing, it seems, is we're trying to put in place all of our systems, a system for determining learning loss, system for identifying gaps, also a benchmark for expected student performance. And yet we don't really have results of any of those things yet. And so. don't really have results of any of those things yet. And so I just, I think, going back to what Dr. Morrison said, just if I was in the seat at the district, that would be concerning because, you know, I don't know what I don't know, and yet I have this target I'm supposed to hit, but I don't know what I'm working with to get to the target. And so I just think a lot of conversation around what type of data, how we're getting the data, what resources we have available to us from the state, what we are going to be held accountable to as a district, what we're not going to be held accountable to as a district, is going to be just important to, it's nobody's fault that we've had a pandemic. Nobody, nobody's trying to get away with something here. Everybody's trying to do a real job to serve students. And I just want to make sure that all the things that we're doing as a board or working with, with the department is to recognize the difficulty. Yeah, we don't lower the bar. Like, we should believe great things that our students can achieve, but there's got to be a realistic component of where we're starting. And so just, I, I would hope that there's some level of ability to, you know, pivot two or three degrees, whatever direction, as we're going along and as results are coming in, that wouldn't just lock us into something because we had to vote on it today. Does that make sense? I don't really know who I'm talking to about this, but that's what's kind of gotten me. I use the heartburn. That's what's given me heartburn for a lot of people, myself included, in this.
It does. It makes sense. And I think, you know, going back to the conversation yesterday, we're approaching kind of a watershed moment. We're going to see some concrete data about the actual academic impact of COVID-19 on our public education system. And having that baseline, again, with, with AMOs from 2018, 19, it'd be important to continue to measure that. You know, yesterday, we heard about T and Ready. We didn't hear about graduation rates. We didn't hear about chronic absenteeism. You know, that is where this metric can fill in, too, and help provide that full picture of if there is learning loss, what it looks like, and other impacts on public school, what that looks like. To your point, you know, as you saw with last year, there, there, there's the ability to adjust certain ways. I certainly don't want to get ahead of our skis here, but, but I think that we're, we're in a watershed moment, again, where we'll kind of get a full picture on what that, that impact has been and have a chance to kind of look at that and adjust from there.
I, I have a question for, go ahead, go ahead, Bob.
No, you go ahead.
I have a question for clarification, because, you know, the conversation is an important one, and I think we're all starting to get more and more heartburn over this vote today. And I, and I look at the, the summary document that was provided that indicates from Public Chapter 299 of the 2021 session, requires the Commissioner to convene a working group and seek approval from the State Board for changes to the formula used to calculate school and LEA performance goals. The formula used to calculate 2021, 22 AMO targets is the same formula used in previous years. So I'm, I'm a little bit confused by what the Public Chapter says, and, and the changes to the formula, and we've been told there are no changes to the formula, at least that was my understanding. And we're going back to 2018, 19, and I have the same heartburn over using that data. So help us to understand that, Jack, and maybe I'm the only one who's not understanding it.
Sure. And I can, I can give my, my best attempt here. I may need to counsel. You know, when they're talking about formula, I believe they're referring to, you know, some of the actual, the definition of formula, right? Like, an AMO is, is, it's the achievement that has to happen to decrease by half, you know, performance gap over eight years. My understanding is that changing the formula would be something like, you know, changing that eight years, changing some of the, like, actual, you know, mathematical methods behind calculating what the AMOs are. That would constitute actually changing the formula. Another example of that would be maybe removing one of the things that we actually calculate AMOs for. I don't know if there's, there's a better answer in the audience next to me, but, but that's my understanding of changing the actual formula. It would not be using it, using data from a certain date is not changing the formula.
Correct. So, yes, and that's why I asked for the clarification. And further, the Commissioner was required to convene a working group. Who, who is this working group, and what did they do, since it says they are, the part of the role is to change the formula?
So I believe, Madam Chair, the only, the only, the Commissioner would not convene a working group unless there was a, a need or a want to change the formula. That working group convening is a necessary step before the formula could be changed. But we're not changing the formula.
Okay. I guess the confusion, though, Jack, is that Public Chapter 299, as written in this summary from the 2021 session, says it requires the Commissioner to convene this working group and get our approval for changes to the formula. But you're saying that didn't happen.
I'm going to refer to Angie Sanders, General Counsel at the State Board of Education.
Yes. So, Madam Chair, you are correct. The only reason that is noted in here is we wanted to make it clear for the board that the formula is not changing. If the Department of Education did want to change the formula, then the Commissioner would have to convene this working group and then bring those changes to you all. That is not happening here, so that is why there was no.
Okay. So the way that it was written led to my misunderstanding of.
Madam Chair, in reading this over again, I, I do agree with you. The way it's worded, perhaps, is a little bit confusing there, and it implies that perhaps that, that, that all of this is required regardless of whether we want to change the formula. But as Ms., Ms. Sanders just clarified, all of this wouldn't happen unless there was first a, a want to change the formula.
Okay. Still, lots of heartburn here. I'm not sure what it's going to satisfy it. Thank you.
If I may ask a question also, if, if, if someone does not achieve the AMO or hit their AMO, what's the outcome of that? They get a lower, go ahead.
There are a variety of supports that we can provide as a department through kind of normal means of assisting schools and districts. But there's also double AMOs. There, there are ways to adjust the calculation. Again, the definition of an AMO is, you know, the necessary year-over-year performance increases that are needed to decrease by half performance gaps over eight years.
And then what's the outcome of that?
Can you say a little bit more?
Well, like, in other words, there's a, there's a score. Well, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Asking about the consequences if you don't hit those scores.
Right. Yes.
Right. So as I said, I mean, really, these are about, about student performance and making sure that our schools have a benchmark that they can use to try and meet those performance goals. And so if you weren't, if you didn't meet one in a given year, there are things like double AMOs that can be used to kind of get back on track.
But eventually, you could go on a list. Is that correct or not?
So they cannot be used to assign a school to, 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 like, priority status.
Okay.
What about with, and I know we have no further interest in this, but what about charters? What happens on that? And is that a part of their evaluation on a, for renewal? Or, and this may be beyond the scope of this discussion, but I'm just curious.
So I know that charters are included and AMOs are calculated for them. I don't, what, I'm not sure of whether or not that has any sort of bearing on, you know, their approval status. I might defer to someone else in the audience, if that's the question.
That, that is a question.
Angie Sanders, again. So the charter school performance specifically would be evaluated by their authorizer as part of that authorizer's performance framework. So that would be a separate evaluation. Their, their local school district that oversees them would analyze their performance on their achievement performance.
Mr. Cobbin? Received a text message from a charter school leader, said that the AMO is accountability. You don't hit it, grades are assigned and consequences are triggered for charters. State report card grade is a major portion of performance framework for their renewal.
Casey, do you want to?
That is accurate, that it is part of the descriptive performance. It would appear on the report card. Again, it would be based on the individual charter authorizer, what they determine to be the framework for each individual charter's progress evaluation over time, in addition to the state and federal descriptives of that school's performance.
Vice Chairman E.B., I do have a clarification question, but I believe you're passing the mic to Mr. James for comments, or to Mr. Morrow. I'll go after Mr. Morrow.
I have the same question. Go ahead.
Maybe. So, okay, to make it crystal clear and simple, is there a negative effect to districts if they do not reach the AMO targets? That's the bottom line. I understand everything else that has been explained, but is there a negative consequence that will be held against them in some way, shape, or form that we're not talking about today? I want, I, we need to know that, because if members, and I have not heard anything from my districts, but I'm confident that they would have similar concerns if they have had time to sink their teeth into this. But that would be helpful. Is there a negative consequence, consequence to, to districts?
Thank you, Madam Chair. If you would give us just a minute, we will check and get clarity here.
Thank you.
While you're doing that, I'm hearing from districts. One of the things we talk about each year is that they're, you know, they don't get their AMOs till, like, December or January. They want to know what they are, obviously, before they get through the school system, you know, through the school year. But, you know, we're right now in July, and at least comments I'm getting from districts right now is that they're not necessarily in a hurry for them. Why can't we wait until the most recent data comes out and then determine a fair route for all districts at that point in time? So data's getting ready, going to be coming out in the next couple of weeks, so that's.
So are you asking why we wouldn't wait until the 2020, 2021 data is available?
Correct.
And I would say, kind of harkening back to the earlier comments about, you know, using data that is full and complete from the year prior to the pandemic, which would not perhaps contain any sorts of decreases in order to maintain that high bar for student achievement. You know, I'll also point out Public Chapter 2, from special session, that was very clear on, you know, how certain data could be used from last, last school year, you know, to factor into, into certain metrics. But the, the main thing, I think, that, you know, we would emphasize there is the importance of using pre-pandemic data in order to maintain that high bar.
I'm not saying that we would only use that data, but I think the, the comment that's coming forward is, is that we'll have a lot more data. We'll have the 2019, 2020. We'll have the 2020, 2021. And can we put together something that is fair with both sets of data, with, with appropriate caveats that we heard yesterday, I think, as a comment? We are having a called meeting in September, so is that something that we could address? Could we address this in September, which is still probably earlier than we got the AMOs for last year?
So that, that may actually, I, I believe the way that, that we're restricted here is they can use one year of prior data. So that's the first thing I'll say is.
Restricted by how? By law, or by rules?
I was going to say that I think that, that question we just got into about Public Chapter 299 that requires the convening of that working group and the board's permission to change the formula. If you're talking about using, you know, data from two, two years, that, that could be, and I might refer to counsel again, they're shaking their heads, yes, that might actually, that might actually trigger the need there pursuant to Public Chapter 299 to call together that working group, seek board's, you know, permission, because it would be changing the formula from using one year to two years.
This may be just me, maybe somebody watching. What exactly, there'd be a lot of, what are we voting on? What would the vote be on, actually?
So you are voting on the, the AMOs for this upcoming school year, so those targets?
Okay.
The percentage increases in those areas that I mentioned, the achievement, graduation rate, chronic absenteeism, ready grad, and ELL proficiency, to decrease by half in eight years, the, the number, the percentage of students that, that do not hit those, the close by half, the students whose performance doesn't meet the standard over eight years.
There's no change to what, so this is an eight-year thing?
That's right.
Okay. And has, the formula hasn't changed at all?
So AMOs in some form or fashion, I believe, have been calculated for, I want to say, since 2002. The, the current ones that we calculate, those, those five areas I just named, have, have not changed, but we have not been calculating all of those for eight years yet with the current formula.
Speak for myself, but that, I don't think that, uh, but, but, and then the concern is if we just, hey, we all vote right now and say, oh, yeah, good, let's do what we did. Back to Lily's point, that could put certain schools who would need it for report card charters, those at a significant disadvantage, their authorizations or the renewals, because of the pandemic year is our gap. So like, so, but I, I still want to do something unintentionally harmful to school districts and LEAs that no one's intending to do. Yeah. Like, I don't want an unintended consequence being that we, it all makes sense. Well, to some, it makes sense on paper, but I don't, I don't want to unintentionally do harm to someone who doesn't deserve it, because we're all coming out of a pandemic. And if there is a time window that we could gather more information, at least have some level of information to see what are we really talking about from a performance benchmark, given what we just came through, that would seem like it would be in the best interest of districts. So is there a, is there a negative to us waiting till September to decide on this?
So there's a couple, there are a couple of things I'll highlight here. One, you know, districts have never had these this early in the year. Two, come September, should the ask be to consider multiple years, I believe pursuant to Public Chapter 299, there would need to be convened.
Well, could, could we convene that now? Ask to convene that at this point in time? You know, if there's ever a year, look at changing the formula, maybe this is the year. And what I'm, the comments I'm getting is, is that not hitting your AMOs has significant consequences to local districts. So is that something that, you know, we could ask to convene that right now? Come back September with some preliminary results or something?
So I may have to refer to counsel, but I believe the way that Public Chapter 299 is, is written is that this would be on the impetus of the department. So we would be the ones that would, would have to start that conversation about making changes. And we're before, before you all today recommending that AMOs be used based on the most recent year of complete data. So I, I cannot, I cannot by myself today say that we would, that we would do that. I would have to go back and we would have to have those conversations. That is not what we are doing here today. You know, what we are doing here today is recommending that AMOs be set based on the most prior year of available data, because we believe that is important to maintain the same high bar of achievement for our students.
So I understand you're in a difficult position right now, Jack. So I'm going to think out loud with you here, but I, so I understand what you're saying. This public chapter is new to all of us, so understanding what would involve in the timeline, I imagine that would be a bit of an undertaking, clearly, to get a working group together. And we're not sure if that's even what the department would want to recommend. So I, I guess I'm, I'm wondering a couple of things. I think you guys are to be applauded for getting it to us this soon. I mean, it was a quick turnaround, and so there hasn't been a lot of time to digest it. I think that's where the rub is coming. But to your point, I know the intent was to make sure that we telegraph this information as quickly as possible to, to districts, which is what we know they want. is what we know they want. And by putting it on the, the agenda like we have, even if we don't vote, you have done that. I mean, I think districts will be able to see what their AMOs would be if there's no change to the formula. So I guess what I'm wondering is if there really is any disadvantage to waiting till September, if we put the information out there. I think it's going to need a little interpretation from the questions I've been getting in terms of how it applies to those content areas like we discussed earlier. But looking to your all's team in terms of, like Nate said, what would be the consequences of waiting, not assuming necessarily, as Bob was suggesting, that we would have to, you know, have a working group, but I think that's open for question. But even if it came back exactly like it is in September, would it give us a chance to sort of help districts, to help our board, understand what's at stake, how this applies? I don't know, I'm just, I think people are feeling a little rushed, even though I think the intent was really to be applauded. So we'll let you guys determine together how we proceed.
And my concern, the reason I suggested the working group was not, and I understand it, it's your role, it's your, you know, you're the ones who determine whether you're going to do it or not, but if in fact this is the year to change it, or whatever, something that you'd, I, I agree with Dr. Morrison that feeling a little rushed at this point in time, step back and think about what we're doing and do it, give the districts a chance to provide their input, and for us to better understand what's the impact if they don't make a, because we're getting different readings, you know, from people right now.
Vice Chair. So, you know, I, I'm sitting here thinking about, both from a teacher perspective and administrator perspective, you know, my teachers come back week after next, and so data release comes out, we see, you know, it's rough, we know, we expect that. But then you hand a teacher an AMO at the very beginning of school and say, okay, here you go, good luck. That's two, three times what it previously was. And maybe the year before, before COVID, you're really, really close. So you knew, okay, I'm going to change some things, we've got some extra supports, I'm going to get there. But I think for morale especially, you're looking at school leaders, district leaders, teachers who are just going to say, this is impossible. And just that, I don't think that's the message we want to start at the beginning of the year, coming out of one of the worst years in history. Again, if you wait till September, we take another look at it and have time to digest, how can we, you know, if we end up not changing it, how can we present this in a, a different light? And that gives us some time to prepare versus it's come back in three days and I'm already kind of in a negative mindset, so.
Edwards.
I apologize for this question because I know you all get, what? What is the downside of waiting till September?
Objectively, since we have teased that late before, I would say that there isn't downside, so to speak, refer back to what I said about the importance of having a goal in place for the start of the school year and our ability to do that for the first time today. And I'll also refer to the fact that should we change the formula, again, it would, that recommendation would have to come department, long process to do so towards the end of June.
Under, be careful what you ask for, you might get. Mr. Be careful what you ask for, might get it, maybe delayed and you're back to where, further down the road for the districts and the teachers.
I think that's, I think that's a fair assumption, yes.
Mr., yeah, Mr. Vice Chair, I, I don't, I don't know what this vote would turn out, but it, it feels to me that it, it would not be positive to approve this. And I think we're, we're all but saying that. I'm just wondering, is there some way to bring the question before us in a way that we can get a sense of where the will of the, of the, of the board? I, I, I think my sense is that, that if you put it up for a vote, it's not going to get approved. I don't, I'm guessing that, but, and, and is there an alternative that we could state to say that we are going to look at it in September? I, I don't see the, the downside to waiting.
I think there's two options, Mr. Jensen. Uh, you know, we could move to bring it back on the agenda in September, at our September meeting, and that would provide time, or we could move to table. We move to table, there'd be no further discussion at this point in time, but it would have to be brought off the table at some point in time. So those are two options that we have that would not require a vote against the motion or for the motion, on the motion. I won't say against or for, I don't want to influence one way or the other either. But I, I'm like you, and I think others, would like to get some additional information and get input from the districts and better understand what the impacts are. If there's nothing that's changed, then the districts will know right now what's going to be proposed, so they will know where they're headed to. If it's something that's changed, then, then it'll be changed, you know?
If I may, I, I would move that we move this to the September agenda.
We have a motion to move to the September agenda. Do I have a second to that motion? Second to postpone to the September agenda. Is there further discussion on this item? No further discussion? Mr. Griffin, please call the roll.
Mr. Robbins. Mr. Darnell. Mr. Ebi. Mr. Edwards. Mr. Ferguson. Mr. Hamby. Mr. Jensen.
Aye.
Ms. Kim. Mr. Morrow. Madam Chairman.
Aye.
Vice Chairman.
And thank you, Mr. Powers. Unfortunately, you, you got the short straw today. But I do think that, you know, this is the right, right direction to take, and we look forward to working together and moving to see what we can do by September.
Thank you.
Okay, next item. I think that takes us through those items to the teacher licensure issues.
Mr. Mattis.
Presenting to you the staff recommendations for educator licensure discipline. Take any questions you may have at this time before to vote.
On item B with Mr. Dever, the three-month retroactive suspension, can you explain to me how that works? So how is that enacted? How does he?
So since he's still teaching in the classroom, we have a suspension on his license, but he wouldn't be in class since this is over three months old.
So reading through that, one, in October of the prior year, the parent expressed displeasure with the comment that he made. Six months later, he made the same comment plus another comment. He received a one-day suspension from the principal, it appeared. And so now he'll receive a retroactive suspension on his record, but no time away from the classroom. I think his disregard for that student, his disregard for that parent, and not to mention his lack of professional responsibility, especially as it relates to that student's 504, I think warrants that he have some harsher penalty to pay than a retroactive three-month I guess I would suggest that he have to not be in the classroom for at least 30 days. And so hopefully, I know he went and took a class, but hopefully that, that sends a message not only to him, but to, to others that all those strikes are just too egregious and, and that there is a accountability for him as a educator, especially being entrusted with children with special needs, that he conduct himself more, more professionally.
Mr. Robbins, would you like to pull that one out separately and, and make a motion on that then?
Yes, sir.
We'll, we'll pull that and take a special vote on that. You want to make a motion then, specifically what you're asking for? And I guess what happens is since he signed a consent order, whatever we come up with, you have to go back and.
Correct, yeah, I would, I would have to go back to him, send him another letter and, but y'all did, it's in order, or requesting a harsher penalty to start the process over.
And recommend what the penalty?
Correct.
Yes. Mr. Robbins, you want to make that motion?
Motion.
What, 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 what are you recommend, are you recommending a particular?
Just recommending, I guess, the only way I can describe it is a 30-day out-of-the-classroom suspension.
So you, so you, so you, you move that for Mr. Dever, that we provide a 30-day prospective suspension and change the consent order to so-state?
Exactly.
Can I have a second to that motion? Any further discussion on that one? If not, Mr. Griffin, do you want to call the roll?
Mr. Robbins. Mr. Darnell. Mr. Ebi. Mr. Edwards. Mr. Ferguson. Mr. Hamby. Mr. Jensen.
Aye.
Ms. Kim. Mr. Morrow. Chairman Hargrove.
Aye.
Mr. Vice Chairman, you have nine ayes.
Motion passes. That leaves us with the remaining items. Are there any other, Mr. Hamby?
Can you hear me? Okay. So on item D, to start off here, I've actually been taught by this individual my freshman year of high school, and the things that he had or is being charged with, I've actually experienced firsthand and had seen firsthand. That all being said, I am curious about the Order 1 on here. Is that effective as of today or effective as of 2019 on item D?
What was your question again?
So is the 18-month suspension like as of today or as of 2019 when this was first made?
Be as of today when the order is signed.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Other questions or comments? If not, can I have a motion then to accept each one of the other recommendations for the licensure item? So moves, do I have a second? Ms. Kim, seconds. Any further discussion? Mr. Griffin, please call the roll.
Mr. Darnell. Mr. Ebi. Mr. Edwards. Mr. Ferguson. Mr. Hamby. Mr. Jensen.
Aye.
Ms. Kim. Mr. Morrow. Chairman Hargrove.
Aye.
Mr. Vice Chairman, you have nine ayes.
The motion passes. That concludes the items that we have on the agenda. And Madam Chairwoman, we do miss you and hope you get to feeling better and look forward, I look forward to you coming back at the, at the next meeting. I think it has been a good two days, very fruitful discussions yesterday, very fruitful discussions today. I think we are moving things forward. Nothing else said, the meeting is adjourned.